Yeah, okay. Oh shoot, I didn't log into Zoom yet.
Yeah, 4:30 to 7:00 I think at the boutique.
I didn't log into Zoom. Are you logged in?
No, I'll be in in a second.
Okay.
Want to get started?
All right. Good morning and welcome to the April 11th Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We'll call this meeting to order. And does anyone have a moment of silence? Okay. I think that we can all just think about the incredible wave of violence that is sweeping over our country. So many people are dying violently by guns. And I think it's appropriate to just pause and consider that for a moment. Vice Chair Simon, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any extra items that are not appearing on the agenda?
I do not.
Okay. And we will move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wishes to pull?
Madam Chair, I would like to pull item 5.3.
For discussing later?
Yes.
Okay. Anything from the public? Any items the public would like to pull? Anybody in Zoom?
So I am finally in Zoom. Thank you. And no hands in Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for approval.
Madam Chair, move to approve 5.1, 5.2, and 5.4 from the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. How long will 5.3 take?
Not that long that I'm aware of.
Do you want to do it now?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, approve the late mileage claim in the amount of $20.67 for administration staff person Supervisor Spatier.
So I know that there is work happening to update the travel policy. And I know I've been speaking with CAO Parker every single time we see these late claims. Having had conversations and sit downs with our auditor controller when we're outside of our policy, these are flags that are raised during our audit, during our single audit season. And I'm done seeing late travel claims. And I would like that travel policy to come back before any further late travel claims in order to ensure that we don't keep raising a flag to the IRS and any other auditing that gets done for our county reserves or our county finances. And so today I will be voting no, and that is why I pulled it.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Um, CAO Parker?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to announce that we will have a draft before the board on April 25.
Okay, great. All right, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
He had a comment here.
Oh.
Did you have a comment?
Oh, sorry. Supervisor Green?
No, it's fine. We approve the late mileage claim in the amount of $20.67 for administration staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes and it's one more minute. Oh, just turned. Okay.
There you go.
All right, 6.1, public input, our 906 item. Anyone from the public wishing to come up? You can state your name and have three minutes. Do you have public input?
I do.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Greg Bianchini. I live on 13th Avenue in Lucerne. And my issue today is with with the any positive change program that's happening on our street. And one thing I want to be clear about, I'm not against this program at all. It's a needed program and everything. The problem and my complaint is where it's happening and how it's happening. So last week, last Tuesday, was really disturbing when the anti-positive change truck pulled up right outside of the Power Mart gas station. I mean, literally right outside in the street. And, you know, all the kids go to that store. I mean, it's a small town. We have one gas station. And she's set up, I mean, literally right there in the street. So, yeah, and then she's also set up in front of homes. And she's set up a couple times, like four houses down from where I live, too. And let's see. This is not an appropriate site for this program. It's not safe for the children. It's not safe for the residents. And it's especially not safe for the seniors, especially the elderly women that live on that street and live in our community. So I think what could happen with the any positive change, I mean, the truck can drive anywhere. If she could just move to a safer spot, and there's really nowhere in Lucerne that would be safe where the kids, you know, the kids have to see this truck and they shouldn't have to, they shouldn't be anywhere near that truck. So my proposal is to have her move up to the beginning of town where the Lucerne sign is. It's Highway 20 and Foothill. There's a little turnout right there on the highway right there. That is the farthest away from the school. It's the farthest away from the businesses. And it's the farthest away from any homes and residents that live in Lucerne. You know, if she's going to continue setting up in the street, I think that's probably the only safe spot for everybody. It could work for her, it could work for the town and everybody. And like I said, I'm not against this program at all. I've had my problems in the past. I know how the drug, the drug thing works. And the kids really don't need to see this truck. I mean, literally on the side of the truck, when they open up the big doors that open up, there's a banner on the side of the truck that says, "No War on Drugs." And there's another sign on there-
Okay, your time is up. Thank you.
That says, thank you.
Thank you.
That says, "Fix with a Friend." Those signs need to go.
Thank you, your time-
Hey Greg.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Greg, let's talk today or tomorrow. I have something we can talk about. Yes, let's touch base.
Thank you, Eddie. I also have a resolution that I'd like you guys, for all of you to look at. And then I'll turn this in, too.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to our 6.2 item, 907 AM Pet of the Week, Animal Care and Control.
Good morning. My name is Officer Downhour. I'm an officer of Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is Officer Copas and this dog Shasta. Shasta is a one-year-old female pit mix. She's been with us for a little over a month. Something that I find absolutely amazing about Shasta, she gets along with everybody. Any dog or animal that we've introduced her to, she likes. Any person that we've introduced her to, she likes. As you can see, she can be very calm and sit here just very naturally. And she can also be a very spontaneous and very much puppy-like. I think that she would fit well in any home that she goes to. And we're really hoping that she could get adopted. If anybody has any questions or would like to meet Shasta, you're more than welcome to come down to 4949 Hellbush Drive here in Lakeport. Or if you want to just go ahead and give us a call, 707-263-0278.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She is so sweet.
She is very sweet.
I think she might be a relative of my dog that I got from the shelter.
Well, and something, it's kind of sad. Shasta has happy tail right now. It means she wags her tail so much that she's actually given herself an injury.
Oh.
Yeah. So she's just that happy. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming, Shasta.
Come on, baby.
Happy tail.
Happy tail.
Okay, we will move on to 6.3, our 908 AM National Poetry Month and our Poem of the Week from the library.
And Madam Chair, we have Georgina Marie Guadalupe on Zoom.
Oh, wonderful.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me. So for this week, I had planned on reading one of my own poems, but I received a poem by a seventh grade teacher in Middletown that I thought was an amazing poem and a good example of how we can use poetry to speak about greater conditions and issues. So I'm going to read her poem. And this is called "Cavitate." "Cavitate" by Jolene Jessen. From the Latin "cavus hollow," the formation of a cavity in a body tissue or organ, as from disease or gunshot wound. I learned this new vocabulary word at a school district training on how to apply a tourniquet to students should they be shot while in my care. I learned that to cavitate is actually more math science than language art, something about KE equals MV2. This equation, along with the skills I'm going to learn at today's training, determine whether my students live or die. And a description of modern military ammunition and NATO forces. What? I don't remember. I asked my cooperating science math teacher to explain this to me, but he is practicing our newly acquired skill with a blue Velcro tourniquet around his arm and his cap pulled down over his eyes. I want to go home and cavitate with my children, my own children. As a teacher, is that wrong to say? I want to create a cavity in some warm, alive place and bring them inside, just us and their dad and our favorite things. I will draw them in tighter and tighter until no precious thing can escape and no evil thing can approach. We will talk about dinosaurs and baby names and lie on our backs and draw pictures upside down on the ceiling of our cave like Michelangelo or Neanderthals. Horses and trains and waves crashing and angels. We will listen to the rain pouring down, faint blasts in the distance, hearts beating, and make our own light. Thank you.
I'm so glad you chose that poem I saw earlier this week. It's incredibly powerful. Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Anything from the public? Thank you so much, Georgina. Our next item is 6.4, 909 AM Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County.
Is anyone that would like to come up for this proclamation? Hello?
Are you?
Good, you can come over here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Coming on up.
Thank you all for coming for this proclamation that we're going to dedicate to Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. And once I'm finished, we'll give you the opportunity to speak on this, okay? So this is a proclamation designating the month of April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas in 2022, Lake County agencies responded to the needs of 473 sexual assault victims and their significant others and/or family members. No one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. And the partnership between public and private Lake County agencies is invaluable. And whereas, child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas, Lake Family Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in the County of Lake in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services and continuing support, advocacy, and accompaniment to victims, survivors, and their significant others. And whereas, ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. And it is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas, staff and volunteers of the Lake Family Resources Center Rape Crisis Center work year-round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment information. And whereas, Lake Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set an important example of how forging collaborative relationships improve the quality of service for those impacted by sexual violence. And now, therefore be it proclaimed, that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County and urges all governments, schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsored event this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free from violence and exploitation. Passed and adopted this 11th day of April 2023. Signed by the Chair, Jessica Peiska.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. First, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I wanted to talk about a couple different activities. I don't know which one to state.
Can you give your name, please? Can you give your name, please?
Oh, Gina Pilot. I'm the program coordinator for the Rape Crisis Center. So some of the activities that we're going to be doing this year, so we have designed some coffee sleeves. And some of our local coffee shops are putting them on their coffees. And they are Jitterbean in Lakeport, Studebaker's in Kelseyville, and Sisters in Clear Lake. So don't forget to go there and get a coffee and support our local coffee shops. A couple of our advocates will be on the radio show on April 20th at 2:00 PM on 88.1 KPFZ. They'll be talking about Denim Day, statistics, and services that the Rape Crisis Center has to offer. Another thing that we've done this year is all of our local law enforcement agencies are supporting Sexual Assault Awareness Month by putting magnets. So we designed a blue ribbon, a teal ribbon, and they, all of law enforcement agencies have put them on their cars to support survivors of sexual assault, which was really neat. And then we have Denim Day on April 26th. So don't forget to wear your jeans and support sexual assault survivors. If you need any more information about Denim Day, you can contact Kim Layton or Lauren Brown at 279-0563. And then last but not least, I want to, I want to give a shout out to all of our advocates. These ladies here with me today are amazing. The work that they do, it would just blow you away. They're out there every day, providing direct services to our survivors. They work on-call shifts, which is after work hours. They work on weekends. They work on holidays. They work 24 hours, seven days a week. And I just wanted to publicly thank them, each and every one of them, for everything that they do. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some ends if you guys are interested.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Thank you. Elise Jones, Deputy Director of Lake County Behavioral Health Services. And I just want to thank Lake County Resource, or Lake County Family Resource Center for the partnership. I am a survivor of sexual assault. The assailant was somebody I knew very well. And unfortunately for most women, that's the case. The overwhelming majority of perpetrators are men. The overwhelming majority of perpetrators are known to the victim. So this is not a women's issue. This is a men's issue. And I stand here today and witness of women supporting other women. But we can only stop this epidemic, and it is an epidemic. It's way more common than you would ever believe if men take accountability. This is not a women's issue. This is a men's issue. And I've been in social work for over a decade. And the overwhelming majority of people who struggle with serious mental illness or children with serious emotional disturbance have a history of sexual abuse and assault. This is corroding the fabric of our society. And it starts in our homes. We need to teach our sons that no means no, that women have autonomy over their bodies. And we need to teach girls that they can say no, and that it needs to be respected. Thank you.
Any other words? Thank you for that. All right. Anybody from the public?
I just wanted to say thank you. I went through a sexual assault in 2015. And, you know, I walk around during most of my life feeling like I'm super strong and, you know, I'm a badass. But when that happens, you never realize that all of a sudden, all that was taken away from me. And I was extremely vulnerable and very scared. And so it was really helpful that at that time, Lake Family Resource Center and Victim Witness, those were my badasses. And y'all got me through it. So, thank you.
And I'd be remiss to not say this. In the communities, especially with Native American communities and other communities of color, a lot of abuse is passed down through generation. Especially, I highlight Native Americans because boarding schools have perpetuated that afflicted abuse. But I don't just, I just don't mention that about Native Americans because it's prevalent in every community. And when, when men don't stand up for women or do not talk about it, when brothers, cousins don't say something because it's someone related to them and take accountability for it, it keeps happening and it doesn't stop. So speak out as a woman or a male that's abused as well, but speak out for the women as well. If, you know, that's the most important thing because that's the only way you can stop. So I just, I had to say that. So, anybody else from the board?
Thank you Supervisor Crandall. It's so important to have men stand right next to us all the time. Thank you.
I do have, I do have one comment. I know that it was mentioned about Denim Day. Can someone explain what Denim Day is at the mic there, just for the community? I think-
So Denim Day is always the last Wednesday of, in April, every single year. Denim Day originated, I think it was in 1990. Originally, a girl in Italy, she was 16 years old, and she was taking her first driving test with a male. And he had her pull over and he sexually assaulted her. He told her not to tell her parents, or he would hurt, you know, her and them. And she went home. And thank God that she told her parents. And he was arrested, and he was charged and went to court. And he, he was able to take it to the appeals court, and they appealed it. And they said that there's no way he could have sexually assaulted her because her jeans were too tight. So therefore, she had to help him, and it was consent. So all the women in the Italian parliament started wearing denim to work the next day. And it's just been something that's been carried over through the years. So don't forget to wear your denim. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, wow. You're hired. One more. Let's see if I can get Mike Lynn back there. Oh, I did it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our 6.5, 910 AM item is Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2023 and every April thereafter as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in Lake County.
Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2023 and every April thereafter as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. Whereas the County of Lake celebrates the power of the arts, culture, and creativity to heal, uplift, connect, and unite people every day through fire recovery, COVID-19 isolation, extreme weather, and other challenges. And whereas the arts raise awareness of culture histories of what we have in common, what we share with each other, and what differentiate us as individuals to amplify the need for social, racial justice, equality, or equity, accessibility, and inclusion. And whereas the Lake County Arts Council, Middletown Arts Center, Lake County Rural Arts Initiative, Creative Consulting, Pop LLC, Lake County Theater Company, Lake County Symphony Association, and Museums of Lake County work in participation to support the arts, culture, and creativity in Lake County as an essential part of their thriving community and education through a variety of services throughout Lake County. And whereas the Lake County, the County of Lake works in partnership with these local organizations to support the arts and creativity as an essential part of the community life through services including collaborations on, one, highlighting and preserving the culture and heritage of Lake County and at county museums, to Eco Arts Sculpture Walk at Trailside Park and Art Strategic Planning with Public Services, Behavioral Health Creative Arts Engagement for Prevention and Healing, Arts in Public Places in the County Courthouse in Lakeport and Red Bud Library in Clear Lake. And whereas, local arts organizations and groups support community and economic development for Lake County cities and unincorporated areas through the arts and culture. And whereas, the arts are not only an impressive and important agent for economic development, but also impact societal issues that include health, corrections, housing, immigration, veterans, transportation, well-being, and education. And whereas, the arts creativity supports student success and lifelong learning, provide key job skills, and it is imperative for all children and youth in California to have access to arts education in their schools. And whereas, California employs the highest number of people in creative industries, architecture, entertainment, fashion, media, and publishing than any other state in the nation. Whereas, the California Legislature adopted Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 33 on April 25, 2019, proclaiming April 2019 and every April thereafter as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. And in 2021, an additional resolution, SCR 40, was declared to recognize artists as second responders. And whereas, efforts continue to increase funding for the arts, education, and cultural barriers. And whereas, in a state as diverse as the California, the arts serve to give voice to our many communities and their people, spark individual creativity, foster empathy and understanding, spur civic engagement, and serve as a continued source of personal enrichment, inspiration, and growth. Now therefore be it resolved by the County of Lake that April 2023 is a significant time to recognize and celebrate the arts, culture, and creativity of all Californians. And be it further resolved that the Lake County designates April 2023 and every April thereafter as Arts and Culture and Creativity Month. Now therefore, on this 11th day of April 2023, this Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, hereby proclaims April 2023 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. Adopted the 11th day of April 2023 and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Jessica Peiska.
Thank you so much.
that you can share with others through art, as well as encouraging economic growth. Now, this wasn't an easy task because I had to go around and try to find all the arts groups in the county, and we have a lot. So I worked with as many as I could, and I apologize if I left anybody out. But I want to kind of let you know how much we're doing in the county. So bear with me while I give you this wonderful list. In the city of Lakeport, of course, we've been doing a lot. I know Lisa and myself and others in the arts groups have been working with strategic planning directly with the county to help inject more art into everything you guys do, and I love that. We're adding more art opportunities for artists. We're using art in the park here coming up. You'll see when the city finishes building the park, you're going to get some art in there. Woo! And we also have the Essential Worker Murial, which just finished this last year, which is on the site of hospice. And I wouldn't be surprised if you see more murals popping up. They tend to be very popular. The city of Clear Lake, of course, has eight murals coming in. They just finished one this last year at the Chamber of Commerce, and the next mural is being installed at Castle Donuts. The Main Street Corridor Project in Clear Lake, which is being helped by Creative Consulting, will actually be using augmented reality in their future arts. So get ready for new technology and new art forms that way. We also want to welcome the new art venue, Pop Clear Lake, which is a new art gallery. Of course, we have the Main Street Art Gallery here in Lakeport, and we have the MAC Gallery in Middletown. And there's a lot of little pop-ups that show up all the time. So keep your eyes open when you see those little art shops. Get in there, go support them. Tell them how wonderful it is. I bet you can find at least one piece that you like that speaks to you. In Middletown, of course, like I said, we have the Middletown Arts Center and their gallery, which also hosts classes, workshops, performances, community events. The MAC has some wonderful cross-cultural programming made possible through grants and awards, such as Reyes Hermosas, Weaving Baskets, Weaving Bridges, Sound of Liberation, and the Eagle and Condor Project, which is a ceramic mural, which is also a community art project that everyone will be working on. There's arts education, including homeschool, after-school, summer camp, community college classes, and adult education at the MAC, as well as field trips. The Main Street Gallery also does a lot of the same things. We do have classes, arts education, field trips. MAC also helps take care of the Eco Arts Sculpture Walk, which is quite the task. So thank you for that one. It's beautiful. If you haven't been out there and looked at the art and nature, I definitely recommend checking out the Arts Eagle Walk in Middletown. The Lake County Arts Council, that's me, kind of, and a lot, a lot, a lot of other people. Our job is really to help coordinate the arts. We really do try to get out with everybody. Over the last year, we've been the state local partner to the California Arts Council. We've brought in over $150,000 in outside funding support to help artists and arts programs, such as Arts in Public Places, Arts Integration. We have Arts Integration Training and a great new program we developed called Artists in Schools P3, the Poets and Poetry Project, where poet coaches will be going in and creating mentor relationships with young poets to help develop for other programs, such as our Poetry Out Loud program and our slowly developing Youth Poet Laureate Program, which brings us right into literary arts. We've got lots of literary arts. Our poet laureate was just on. The Big Read just happened with our Youth Poet Laureate and Poetry Out Loud competition. That's just the, we also have Main Street Poetry Boxes. We also have highlighting authors that are published. So just literary arts are also blooming. Do not want to leave out the Lake County Rural Arts Initiative, who's assisted the city of Clear Lake with obtaining a lot of their grants, as well as completing a mural with NCO in Clear Lake. And they have a very special teacher grant art supply program. So if you know a teacher that's looking for art supplies, funding is not really available in the schools, so they help with that. They've given over $24,000 in grants to their teachers all throughout Lake County. And then lastly, the performing arts. We don't want to forget them. Let's not forget the Lake County Theater Company, the Lake County Symphony, the Sopa Ries Theater, the Annual Spring Dance Festival. Both of those are under the Lake County Arts Council umbrella. And then the many other musicians and performing artists you see. It's almost impossible to walk around Lake County and not see or hear something that is art. I hope you all realize that. I hope you appreciate it, and I hope you keep participating, seeing, making, being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for taking the time to honor this proclamation. It's an honor to be in service and serve the people of Lake County through the arts. And I'm grateful for the multiple opportunities that the Middletown Arts Center has had to be in service since the Valley Fire in particular and throughout, and to be able to engage in cross-cultural projects. It's been an amazing experience, and we, we're just honored and grateful to be able to do the work that we do, thanks to grants and thanks to community support. I did want to just give a caveat to what Barbara said, is that the Eco Arts Sculpture Walk, don't go visit there yet. Wait until July. So, and then I just wanted to thank everybody for your attention and for participating in the arts. We are second responders, and we can't do the work that Lake Family Resource does, but we do what comes next. So art is healing, art is powerful, and art is uniting. Thank you so much. Thank you, Milk.
Thank you. And, you know, I just want to say also to, for, you know, all the way around the county, I was on the board when this board voted to support Lake County being, you know, an arts county, which is excellent. And, you know, I will say, since that time, I've been in a museum, in the art, at the MAC, a lot more than not. But it really gives our young folks an opportunity to say who they are and what they're feeling inside without having to say that. And sometimes that's the only way they can get it out. I've seen some real powerful stuff every time I've gone in there and with different artists. But the cultural side of it is, you know, near and dear to my heart, obviously, as all of them are. But seeing the young tribal folks be able to put on paper some of the pain and some of the trauma that they've lived through throughout our communities here is very powerful. So I want to thank you for that and working with the tribes too in the Middletown area. And I know across the county, that's a focus too. But thank you very much for everything. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the board. Have any comments?
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, just want to, it was, first time I heard, it was surprising, second responders. But having lived through the Valley Fire and other fires and having seen the power of art in recovery with other people in my own family, it certainly strikes me. And I also want to highlight what you said, the funding in the schools for arts is just not there, and yet that's where we want to get the art. So to those groups that are doing outreach to local schools, those volunteer groups, the school boards, anything we can do, I mean, yeah, the dollars are not there, but as long as the vision is there, I'm sure we can look for ways to get it in the schools and get those young kids excited about art. And as our poet laureate said, also heal, also deal with some of the difficult emotions they have to deal with in their own lives. So very excited that you're here today and on both sides of the spectrum, the adults need it and the kids need it. We all need our arts. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So a blank piece of paper is a blank piece of paper until you start putting a drawing to it or some words to it. And I see the same thing with our communities. A building or a wall is just a building or a wall, but you start adding a splash of colors on it and putting an entire mural, or you hear music coming out of the building. It just creates a different life in our community. It's alive. It's energized, and it's wonderful. It's a positive thing. So I really appreciate seeing all the murals that are coming up. And I just need to say, we have amazing artists that live here. Some of them are worldwide renowned artists, not just people that are doing stuff in the community and only be seen or heard of in this community. It's overwhelming to find out what works some of these folks have done, and we couldn't be luckier to have them here in our community to participate and add on to what we're getting. And there seems to be a huge movement of art, and I'm all for it. So, thank you.
Did you ask, yes?
Yes. Not everybody can accentuate how they feel, you know, just through words. And so like Supervisor Sabatier said, putting it on paper, putting it on canvas, putting it into music is very important for folks to be able to, you know, show how they truly feel at times because it's also a form of medicine when people do that. You have things bottled up, you don't know how to say it to somebody, you don't know how to, you don't have someone to confide in. And so people put that energy into the art, and it comes out magnificent. So, yeah.
Thank you. So I, I do want to add one more to your list, and that's the Cobb Mountain Arts and Ecology Center. That's okay. I just, I want to thank you two women for being our lead art activists for the county, and we have so many people that stand with you, that really have developed the richness and culture that, that we have here in this county. And I feel like it's always been a magnet for artists to come here. There's a particular lifestyle that is very welcoming and can sustain artists here. And that's the other part of it, is that we have to be able to have the ability to sustain a lifestyle for, for people to create. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you for this proclamation. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Nope? Okay.
There we are. Okay. Oh, wait. Where are you right now?
I'm photobombing in the back.
We both are. We're right behind Lisa's head.
All right, cool. Okay. Let's, they're here. There, and let me go up. Okay. Cool. Yes. Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Photographers, again, art.
There you go.
Art.
Our 6.6915 item, A, Consideration of Resolution, Amending Resolutions 2022-15 and 2022-45 for the purpose of extending the end date for changes made to cannabis cultivation taxes in regards to suspension of CPI increases using canopy area only and a decrease of the tax by 50%. And B, Discussion on Permanent Changes to Cannabis Cultivation Taxes. Supervisors Sabatier and Green.
Trying to...
So we want to tackle A first?
Yes.
Okay.
So in 2022, starting in January, we started looking at some potential tax reliefs. Eventually, we looked at the CPI increase suspension, especially in light of all the inflation. Looking at a 13% or 12% increase was not necessarily going to be helpful, especially in light of the market decreasing, devaluing. We also looked at a 50% tax reduction, and we also look at changing it from cultivation area, which included buildings, empty space, to just the canopy area only, which is very much aligned with what the state licensing would come with. And so I have just here some quick notes. The CPI increase suspension expires at the end of this year, or January 1, 2024. The 50% tax reduction expired at the end of 2022, and the canopy area only, that expires at the end of this year. Since one of those things was expired and everything else seemed to have different expiration dates, working with Supervisor Green, we're looking at extending those cannabis tax reliefs to the end of 2024. One of the reasons that we chose the end of 2024 is there was a conversation when we did the tax relief about, do we need to put this back to the voters? Do we not need to put this back to the voters? Do we make this permanent or not? And 2024, in November, would probably be the most appropriate and, let's just be real, cheapest way to put any ballot on the, any measure on the ballot. And so that is why we're looking at that kind of extension and that level of expiration date. No changes to what's already been done, just extending the dates. I know in speaking with our tax collector, Patrick Sullivan, who was very heavily involved in all of these changes in the past, there was a recent review of all of the counties. And we're not the lowest, but we're definitely not the highest as far as the current taxes that other counties are doing. I think we are more towards the lower end, but I do know that nonstop articles that I've been seeing that farms are disappearing, that were cannabis farms, and that the industry is still in the midst of a roller coaster ride and struggle. So looking to see if that's something that the rest of the board would like to consider is to extend those dates, and I'll let Supervisor Green speak on this item as well.
Thank you Supervisor Sabatier, and appreciate your work on this. Follow the bouncing ball, a couple, couple ideas in here, and one is canopy versus cultivation area. When we did the first ordinance way back when in 2016, cultivation area seemed like the simpler metric to apply. Of course, it wasn't. We're only taxing the cannabis cultivation, not all the accessory uses and stuff like that. So state law has definitely changed since 2016 to favor the canopy calculation. We did that, this board did it in the previous resolutions, and the proposal before you now would extend the canopy area calculation. And in the B item on this, we're going to discuss whether that's going to be a, something we should look at doing permanently. I'm strongly in supportive of that. The tax relief, yes. You may have heard that cannabis, the licensed cannabis industry has been, not besieged, but has undergone a fairly dramatic up and down cycle in prices. Part of that is simple supply and demand. Part of that has to do with hard costs that are a little harder to track. But the, the universal thing we've heard from our fledgling cannabis industry is they're hurting. Tax relief will continue to support them as they find their way in this new marketplace. I don't think they have any expectation, or do I have any expectation, the, the tax relief portion of it would be permanent because we are among the lowest tax rates in the state still. But, but we do need to support those people that have committed to moving us forward, have incurred substantial financial risk in doing so, and are just looking to get through the next year or two until the market stabilizes a little bit more. And I think those are good things to do. We have to support our industry. And I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
I have a question. I, I thought you were asking for it to become permanent.
No, today...
Was that in the memo?
The resolution that we have before us is to extend all of these to the end of 2024. And then part B is to, do we want to change anything permanently? Is that through a tax measure?
So that'll be in B?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from the board? Or, okay, well, open it up to the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this item? No one? Yes? Okay.
Good morning. Jennifer Smith, representing the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, as well as my own farm. We appreciate this, that this is back before you, and appreciate the relief that we have received the last two years. It's been instrumental in keeping the farms that we do have here afloat. I think that we could directly attribute our success and our ability to continue farming to this reduction in not only the tax rate, but the canopy calculation has been essential. As the market has not drastically improved, we ask that this rate does, the reduction does continue. We're appreciative of it. If you look at the state numbers, we're down about 30% in licensed farmers in California. And so we'd like to stop the bleeding here in Lake and maintain what we have. So I appreciate the consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we can go to the Zoom room.
We have phone 6205.
Yes, you can unmute Bart. Is that you?
Good morning. Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I am wondering what analysis has been done in Lake County to assess the cost of running the commercial cannabis program and the cost to first responders and the Sheriff's Department for crime, injury, fires. I believe none. This needs to be done before giving a handout of public funds to support a private sector group of businesses. Fiscal analysis needs to be done first, then inform the public of it, and then let the public vote on how they want county monies distributed. Currently, Mendocino, in their cannabis program, costs their general fund $724,000. That's a handout.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we can go to the Zoom room?
We have phone 6205.
Yes, you can unmute. Bart, is that you?
Good morning. Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I am wondering what analysis has been done in Lake County to assess the cost of running the commercial cannabis program and the cost to first responders and the Sheriff's Department for crime injury fires? I believe none. This needs to be done before giving a handout of public funds to support a private sector group of businesses. Fiscal analysis needs to be done first, then inform the public of it, and then let the public vote on how they want county monies distributed. Currently, Mendocino, in their cannabis program, costs their general fund $724,000. That's a handout to private business. There isn't enough tax and revenue from cannabis in Mendocino to support their county staff, their first responders, their Sheriff's Department, needed to support the industry and protect it. Even legal growers want crackdowns on illegal supply that, that suppresses their profits, sorry. Under Sheriff Martin, 90% of the illegal pot in Lake County, we were told, went unaddressed. California Constitution says that the Board of Supervisors must first focus on public health and safety. Both fire responders and law enforcement are understaffed by 20% or more, and are already stretched to their absolute limit. Repeated known squatters start fires in the same illegally occupied places. All the county needs the $1 million support per year that the Roadmap Task Force gave to the North Shore. In just a small area of the North Shore that has made quite a difference, the whole county deserves that attention. That is where public funds should be focused. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have another handout?
Yes, we have Erin McCarrick.
Go ahead, Erin. You can unmute and state your name and have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Erin McCarrick from Clear Lake. I want to thank the board for Supervisor Sabatier and Green for bringing this to, to the board, especially at this time in the year, arms and operators are determining whether or not to operate. Of course, we always love to be there in person, and usually the cannabis industry comes out in force, and we all are on force via social media and, you know, behind the scenes. But right now, people are very much determining whether or not to continue going. And this is going to help them budget. This is going to help them determine if they can keep going, and also just give a lot of clarity. So, I very much appreciate this being brought forth. And I echo what Jen said, is absolutely the success and continuation of, especially small farms in Lake County, is due to this tax reduction. And it not being permanent, so we can figure out, you know, what does work with the overall industry in California and nationwide, how that impacts everybody. And in terms of the economic impact, it's, it's much greater than just the cost to the county. It's, there's the ripple effect of people staying here, living here, wanting to continue to live here, and provide that, you know, ancillary effect to the community. There's a, somebody in Sonoma State, I believe Sonoma State in Humboldt, doing a study on the economic impacts of the industry and its ripple effects throughout there. And additionally, having a cannabis program and having viable legal farms enables the county and cities, municipalities, Sheriff's Office, fire departments to be eligible for grants, either equity grants or law enforcement grants that cut down on the illegal grows and empower small operators to continue. So, thank you so much. I urge the adoption of this, and thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Erin.
Sarah Bodnar.
Go ahead and unmute and have three minutes.
Thank you. Sarah Bodnar, Policy Director for the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Thank you to Supervisors Sabatier and Green for your leadership and being proactive about this at the beginning of the season. Timing is everything, and you, you know the position farmers are in, making decisions about their businesses this year. I also want to say thanks to the Tax Assessor's Office, because in Lake County, permitted farms are tax-paying farms. And that is not the reality in the example that we heard about Mendocino County just a few minutes ago. It's real that some jurisdictions have struggled to collect their taxes. And your program in Lake County functions well, and it means that the, the legal compliant farms and permitted farms in Lake County are feeding into the tax base. And you can't operate without paying your taxes. And so, this is really about sustaining the tax revenue for the county at a rate that can work for the farmers and mean that they will continue to pay their taxes and also remain in the permitted system, which is no small feat in California's market today. So, I want to say thanks to the whole county for making that work. And, you know, I think you understand the impact in, in terms of the farms and their businesses quite well. So, I just want to say thanks, and we really appreciate this coming forward now.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anyone else?
We have a repeat of phone 6205.
I think we'll just move on.
Yes, 0438.
And now, phone 0438 just popped up.
Okay. Phone 0438, you can unmute and state your name. You'll have three minutes.
And I do not see them unmuting. I know you are on a phone. If you want to press star six, that should unmute. There we go.
Hello, my name is Linda Bryant. I am a small cannabis business owner, per mity, in January of 2022. And I would simply like to echo all of my fellow cannabis business owners in Lake County for what they presented today. I am one of the 70% holding on by my fingernails, trying to decide whether or not I will be able to continue in business, but want so much to be a participant in producing tax revenue for the county in later years, once the business, once the environment, the industry catches back up in the cycle that we are in now. And so, thank you so much for your consideration and all the work you do. And I am hoping so much that you will vote positively for the relief in order for us to survive. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, you can repeat. Bart, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much.
Bart, please, please keep on the, Bart, please keep on the item, which is what we're talking about, which is-
The cannabis on the item. $4 million in bad taxes are owed in Mendocino. We don't know what that amount is in Lake County. The crash of the cannabis industry is statewide. It's not local to our county. It's not our fault. It's not the growers' fault. It's happening statewide and has to be addressed systemically statewide. Other states are doing better. Other countries are doing better. How do they do it? We need to find out. The industry locally in Lake County already has access for, to $40,000 to $150,000 to pay their permit fees, something that no other business has access to. They can already apply for these grants. And there are other grants that have been used already to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Supervisors, I'll, I'll close public input and bring it back to the board. I don't know who had their pen up first.
I think Michael did.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out, there was an e-comment as well, a letter of support for today's action from Michael Columbano, who operates a licensed farm in Jerusalem Gray called Ghost Dance.
There was also an e-comment against it, too. So, we want to bring attention to both of them.
That was more of a personal email sent to us rather than as an e-comment, but similar.
True. Thank you for mentioning that as well. To the, to the, to the last, to anyone who might have the idea that we are giving away public funds for the benefit of our cannabis growers, I'd like to revisit the history of this. Where we're offering tax relief, cannabis growers in this county do something no other grower of no other crop does. They are taxed on their production. And they are doing that through Measure C, which our voters approved in 2016, and here in Lake County, on the same ballot that Proposition 64 was approved. And the whole premise of Proposition 64 was to end the drug war, to create pathways to legal compliance for cannabis growers, and for those jurisdictions that are brave enough to plow that early path, to create a, a system of taxation that would help support those local governments, and maybe offset some of the unanticipated costs that came with regulation. This is not the only piece of the puzzle. Our permits are still too few and far between. Our process is difficult and expensive to get through. And when we successfully get more growers in the pipeline, and when the economy stabilizes, you know, we'll, we'll talk about our number of permits and our tax rate in that context. And then we'll debate, probably from here until the cows come home, what a reasonable level of taxation is. But let us be very clear, nobody's giving away anything here. We aren't getting enough money right now to handle all the compliance work that we need to do with our cannabis farms, because we can't do it all with fees and fines. So, we are relying on some of our local cannabis tax monies to do some enforcement. Some of the state cannabis taxes that have been collected since the passage of Proposition 64 is flowing back to the counties in the form of law enforcement grants, health grants, and what have you. So, it has been a bumpy road, but I, I just want to reassure the public that we are well on the path that we staked, you know, starting back in 2016. And we're just looking for ways today to support our growers in this period of transition as we try to invent this, as we're flying this plane, which is a terrible way to do things, but that's the way it works in real life sometime. So, I just wanted to highlight that. No giveaways today. The only thing we're giving is time to our growers to mature their operations and to stabilize our market, so we can look ahead to what's coming next.
Supervisor Green, or, sorry, Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. Just to add on to the comment, so I don't repeat, to me, there's a huge separation between those that have come to the counter, have signed an application, and have received their permit, and are doing a legitimate activity that we have approved of, versus those that don't. Those that don't come to the counter and are doing an illegitimate activity, absolutely that's taking money away from our fire districts, from our law enforcement, from our code enforcement, and many others. But at the same time, I don't feel comfortable creating a hardship where we lose our legal industry in order to try to counter that in making money to fight the illegal industry. That'd be similar to creating a mechanic tax, because I don't like the amount of home mechanics that are doing car repairs illegally. That doesn't make any sense. We have to figure out how to get people into a legitimate business and out of the illegal businesses that they do. So, I, I think this is an appropriate thing to do. I, I don't know, I see that Mr. Sullivan is in the back, and I know he didn't want me to call on him, but just in case he wanted to add to the conversation, I, I believe that we actually do a really good job of collecting our taxes every year. I know that it does take multiple conversations. I think the canopy area has helped the process to really better understand what exactly people are paying for. I know both the cultivator, as well as the tax collector, seem to both appreciate the canopy change that we did compared to the cultivation area. But we, we've had some good revenues in comparison to what we anticipated would get paid. But I'm sure Mr. Sullivan would have more details, since you're here.
All right. I was going to speak on the, my comments are more pertinent to B, but I can kind of get on this a little bit. Patrick Sullivan, Treasurer-
Put it up.
Okay. Patrick Sullivan, Treasurer Tax Collector. There's a few comments I wanted to make about the cannabis cultivation tax program that I think are pertinent to the conversation. And this may apply to both A and B. I think the canopy area has been successful. I know your board's considering looking at that on a temporary basis. I hope that's something that could be considered permanent, that puts us more in alignment with the state. Right now, there's not a, I don't think there's a level of coordination and cooperation between state and local on tax that we ultimately want to get to. But if we are going to get there, if we could be on the same system of measurement, that's really going to help. If we go back to cultivation area, it just makes it really difficult when you look at state licensing, if we're just using two different units of measure. So, I understand there's the equity concerns locally with the cultivators. I think they've expressed pretty clearly about canopy. But I'd also say, from a taxation perspective, if we're trying to implement a program, that canopy area is really important for us if we're going to have a good path forward. One thing I would also bring up as we consider other options, or, you know, I, I know there's other programs out there that have been raised. Other counties use a gross receipts model. I think one of the reasons we have been successful here is because we're using a square footage model. Gross receipts, there are benefits, and I understand why people want it, but the burden on staff to implement that is very high.
I'm going to come back for B.
Oh, okay. All right.
I have a question, though, before. We, one of the due dates is coming up soon. And this is the first year that we've made the adjustments to the due dates and the tax rate. And it's hard to understand, because we haven't completed this year yet, what impacts we have. So, is that due date that's coming up soon, is that affecting us negatively? Or, or is it too soon to know? Or is this something that we can reflect on, maybe in the summertime, to, to see how it has all kind of shaken out?
I think it would be better to look at it in summer. What I can say is, you know, each year of the program, we, we have actually made other changes to the due dates. We've, we've always shifted dates around. I understand this has been beneficial for local cultivators, because now the collections are happening after the season. So, you're being taxed in 2023. These payments are for the cultivation that was performed in 2022. But typically, especially because of the way our ordinance is structured, our penalty framework is based off being, you know, whether it's a day late or a month late, the penalty is the same. So, we often have people miss the first installment, but then get caught up at the second. So, the due date's not till the end of May. I mean, May 1st, but you can pay without penalty through May 30th. So, I don't really expect to have a good handle on where we're at until then. I can tell your board, just if it's helpful, we've collected about 1.2 million this year. There are additional funds now that will be credited as a result of the decision your board made with the equity program, because that did open up a higher level of funding to cultivators that meet the criteria. So, there will be additional money credited there. We have a slow trickle of people come in and pay, people that missed the first installment. So, I would expect that to continue for the next month or two. So, I think budget is probably the first time we're going to have a better feel for where we're at and how this has impacted us. The only other thing I can say with the due dates is, from the Tax Collector's Office perspective, the fewer changes we can make in the future, the, the better. You know, every time, we run a lot of different programs. So, when we do have to remodel and revise the, the due dates, we have to work that into our other programs and try to balance those workloads. So, it seems like we've had good feedback about these due dates. So, from my perspective, I hope those could remain going forward.
Okay. Do you want to sit up here for the next part of the conversation? Then you don't have to leave.
You asked my question, so I-
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you have anything to add before we get into multiple?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead.
And just my, my last comment is, the reason that I, I wanted to bring this today, and I'm glad to, that I got to work with Supervisor Green on this, is again, I'm looking at this from somebody involved in the business. I would want to know, what are the expectations, so I can set up my business to be successful this year. And with things having already sunsetted for this year in 2023, I felt this was the opportune time to have the conversation and potentially continue what we had started.
Okay.
Actually, you know what? There was one more, and it might be a B, so let me know. So, I know that we delayed last year. Pat, do you have any idea, just prior to that, how many permities are in default from that timeframe? Or is it still kind of like too much information to go through?
So, that number is still in flux, partially because of the changes to the equity program. We didn't take action on a lot of different cultivators, because so many could qualify for that grant. There were approximately 41 cultivators who had some sort of delinquency at the end of last year. A lot of those are being covered through the equity grant, but a lot of them are also being disputed in some other way, whether there's a concern about the tax bill or an issue with the permitting. So, we don't have that resolved yet. I don't think we'll have clarity on that probably for several more months after the equity programs expanded and we resolve all of those existing claims. But I would expect that number to continue to drop as we work through them.
Thanks, Pat.
Well, I'm in support of these changes being temporary. I think we can talk about the, the canopy at some point, or maybe in, in item B. But, you know, we, we were, we were in dire straits last winter. Our, our industry was in dire straits, and as we've heard from them, this has offered some stability. We're still in a time of flux. And, you know, I'm in favor of it for today.
Are we done with public comment?
We are.
Madam Chair, I'll for the resolution.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall? Supervisor Crandall.
Nay.
Supervisor Green.
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, Item B. Supervisor Spatje, Supervisor Green. Oh, I will read it. Did I already read it? I think I already read it.
Yeah, I think you read it when we introduced it.
Okay, yeah. Okay, go ahead for Section B.
So basically, again, wanting to continue the conversation we originally started when we created these original resolutions in 2022, where there was conversation about if we changed so much, should we bring it back to the voters? And it takes time to make those things happen. Our staff is at max capacity in many departments, and so wanted to have that discussion on, do we continue to extend these things and review them on a time-to-time basis when it needs to be reviewed? Or do we put it back to the voters and discuss what that timeline would look like at a later meeting? But I just wanted to at least continue the conversation that had began last time where our previous county council had said that maybe we've changed enough that it does need to go back to the voters, and there seemed to be some interest from the board to maybe doing that. So I just didn't want to ignore that part of the conversation.
Well, the changes that we have made, I thought they were within what the voters approved.
No, they are within, yes.
Because we've reduced it. But if we're changing the way that the taxes occur, then that would have to go to the voters. Okay, Supervisor Green.
And to that point, I don't think that's a done deal. I think we would turn to county council if there was direction to move in that. Because if you recall, Measure C had some amendability built into it. As long as it doesn't increase the amount of tax, that would have to go back to the voters. But for reducing the tax, it's a floater. Basically, it was designed to be a floater. We can adjust the tax rate up and down, which is good news. Again, if we are able to scale our industry and get more permits out there, maybe we can lower the tax rate and still keep the county solvent. But to the things I'm most likely, most interested in discussing as far as making permanent, the canopy calculation is what I'm interested in. I'm not interested at this point in beyond the resolution we just approved extending tax relief beyond that, because just like our cannabis growers need some certainty in what's moving ahead, our county, as a tax recipient from this program, we need some certainty too, and we have needs. And I can't guarantee where we're going to be in two years, but I think, you know, having extended two, three, four years now of tax relief on top of the equity program that allows for some tax payments that way, I'm hoping we'll have enough certainty that we don't need to come back and discuss additional tax relief. But the canopy calculation is so common sense, should not require an amendment by the voters, and, you know, we should be moving forward and making that change permanent, whether it's by resolution, whether it's by policy of the treasurer tax collector, whatever it takes. But I don't think it's an unreasonable change. I think it's a common sense change. It will align us with state law. It will align us with the actual cultivation practices of our licensed farmers. And so I think moving, giving direction today to staff to find a way to make that permanent would be appropriate.
Did you want to add anything?
Thank you. Yeah, I would just add a few points. Yeah, I think canopy is definitely something that should be looked at for those reasons I previously stated. There are some other issues if this was to go back to the voters. There's additional changes that we need to make, even if this wasn't going back to the voters. There's enforcement aspects to the ordinance that need to be reviewed. There's different mechanisms we need to put in place to move forward with some of the actions my office needs to take. So I think one of my concerns is that if this were to go back on the ballot and results in some sort of more substantial restructuring, that's just an added layer of complexity for my office. The ordinance was written, I think Supervisor Green pointed out, with the potential changes in state law in mind. And so it did contemplate that there would be changes and that the ordinance might need to conform to those. So I don't, from my perspective, I don't see that it's necessary to go back on the ballot. I did want to speak to gross receipts a little bit, just because I know that has come up, and I just wanted to highlight for your board that that would be a very large administrative undertaking for my office. There's a lot of costs involved. There's staff capacity, which we would need to expand. There's other things that we might need. I know Supervisor Green has brought up software that exists through CCA. When I looked at it before, the cost was too high. But some of the reason we've been able to dodge those costs is by using the square footage model, we're able to utilize a lot of the work that community development is already doing for permitting, and we're able to sort of ride on their coattails. If we were to switch out the model we're in, Treasurer Tax Collector's Office needs to take a lot of that over, a lot of the investigation and auditing that would become necessary. So I think the current program is sustainable. I think there's changes that need to be made. If there's some more stability of the program as it goes on, that will help us. I know each year, it's always been in flux, the changes that are rolling before your board. But I think there's potential to make this work, and in light of our capacity, it's probably the most viable type of tax system out there. I would also just highlight that if we were to switch out this program, as I said, I think we would probably need additional staff and software support as we need to expand auditing. It could also impact other county departments. For instance, once we were to switch to self-reporting or gross receipts rather than the model we're in, we would definitely have to work with the DA's office for criminal referrals when there's fraud and other issues that arise with self-reported returns, which we generally just haven't had to deal with here. The model we operate under has, you know, negated the need for a lot of that enforcement. So that's just something I wanted to get out there as your board considers the different options, is that the current program, I think, is something that our office can ultimately make work with the resources we have. If we go a different route, probably a lot of that revenue would need to be made available so that we could expand and do what we needed to do.
Anybody from the board? Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, I would agree with Supervisors about the A and Michael Green about the canopy, making that a permanent change. Definitely in favor of that at this point, to come back to the board or however we need to do that with help of county council and admin or treasurer tax collection. So anyway, that's where I stand at this point, voted already to extend the tax relief earlier on the resolution, so that's where I'm at at this point.
So I agree with that. But what else did you say about enforcement that would be helpful? A change that you would like to see if we did go through the motions of changing it for the canopy?
I think with canopy, what we would benefit from is that the state utilizes the canopy measure.
Right, but you said there was something, another change that would be beneficial too.
Let's see. Oh, for enforcement, we need to add the ability to more clearly define the place liens. There's other enforcement mechanisms that different counties have, and I think if you're looking at it, most of those ordinances are more like TOT ordinances or unsecured tax what we have. Ours didn't fully define the enforcement ability. So it was left open to be collected in the same manner as other county taxes, but there's additional language we would need to add to effectively move forward with that.
And then the penalties for the due dates too, that's been problematic this year too. So that's something else we could look at?
I think that would be beneficial if your board considered the penalties to the tax ordinance. It's frustrating right now that unlike some other taxes, the penalty doesn't change. You're hit with this large penalty upfront, even if you're just one day late. But then there's no additional monthly penalty. Most tax ordinances have a smaller upfront penalty, and then sort of like an interest rate that accrues each month, or additional penalty if time goes by without paying. I think that's led to sort of unintended consequences here, because once you're late by a day, there's no real reason to, you know, pay right away. You're basically, the only incentive to pay is before we go to take enforcement action, before we notify CDD to pull your permit, or we are going to place a lien or take some other measure. So if there is a way to potentially split that penalty out, I know there's limitations in what you can do within the framework of the ordinance. But some way that there was a lesser penalty upfront that grew over time, I think that would be beneficial for our collection efforts.
And those three things we could change, but we could also keep, as we've just done, keep the due dates flexible and the tax rate flexible as we try and figure this out, weather it for the next couple of years?
My understanding is yes, although some of that would go to county council, because there is some limitations within the total maximum allowable penalty under our ordinance right now.
And just briefly, under Section 18-55, it is a penalty for non-payment in a sum equal to 25% of the total amount due. The, as Supervisor Green mentioned, under the subsequent to vote, under the issue of putting it out for the voters versus just a resolution within the confines of the ordinance, it is based on whether or not the proposed amendment to the cannabis cultivation tax ordinance would result in an increase in the amount of the tax or broaden the scope of the tax imposed herein. So certainly, our office will work with Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, Community Development Administration, in determining whether or, in trying to hash out those details as it relates to that issue, whether it would fall within those confines, based on what's being proposed here as part of the.
We could start with the lower fine and ramp up too. Wouldn't that work?
That is possible to, yes.
I don't know who was first. Supervisor Spatje.
Go with Supervisor Green.
Oh, Supervisor Green.
Just thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for bringing that forward. It kind of jogged my memory. Our Measure C said what it said, but City of Fresno, Measure A in 2018, had much more robust language like you're talking about. It was a graduated level of enforcement, and it didn't really stand out at the time that was being debated. But now that you mention it, that would be a good model. I'm sure there's other good model ordinances out there that you could use, so I'm supportive of that. So permanent canopy and then tweaking the enforcement provisions would be appropriate direction.
Supervisor Spatje.
I remembered. Yes to the canopy being looked at as a permanent. Obviously, we have till the end of 2024 with the resolution that we just approved to make those changes happen, so there's time. And I don't know if Director Turner would like to speak to this, but I'm guessing that within the revision of the cannabis ordinance that she's currently going through, that there'd be the possibility of what's the enforcement if taxes are not paid or things like that.
Sure, thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development. I appreciate Supervisor Green's memory of how we first established the cultivation area. It was easy because it was a static area. However, in that time, since we have been doing our annual compliance monitoring, we're able to measure canopy without any difficulty. Sometimes the ground's a little bumpy, and we had the wheel thing, you know, that made the distance, but this year, we're getting lasers. So it's really no problem for us to measure the canopy, even if it changes every year. Enforcement, it's, it may be helpful for the board to note that should the permutee not pay their taxes, they're in violation then of their conditions of approval. And so Article 60 in our zoning ordinance does provide for revocation for projects such as that. So that is also a pretty big stick that this body carries.
Yeah, but I think it's the time period between installments, when we're not receiving the payments is, that's what I'm concerned about, and that's what's creating a hardship.
Okay, well then, yeah, then I'll take that stick back, because that's mostly for just total defaults.
You keep this stick.
Yeah. I'll save that one for later. But anyway, the board does have some leeway and definitely some leverage to make sure that those taxes are still getting paid.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have something now, or do you want to?
Yeah, I didn't know. You had your pen up.
I was playing with it.
So I just want to make sure I heard something clear. Pat, you stated that your department would have, it would be a heavy burden if there was an election to take places. That would, I don't know if I heard that correctly.
Well, I'm imagining there's generally only two viable models out there right now that counties are using, which is the square footage tax or gross receipts tax. So from my perspective, I would think if it was going on the ballot, the reason to do that would probably be a conversion to gross receipts. I would think if you're staying within the square footage model, you probably wouldn't have the need to go to the voters. So that's my concern, is that if it goes to the voters, the likely outcome would seem to be the conversion to a gross receipts model. I have spoken with other counties, and I've just become aware a lot of the resources that are necessary to maintain that model, and that's what concerns me, because we have difficulty filling our positions, and we have, there's just so many other things we need to do that would represent a large new workload. So that's, it may be too, I don't know what your board ultimately decides. It could be that you need to put it back on the ballot because you want to make more sweeping changes to the current model. I just imagine it would likely be for gross receipts, and that's what concerns me.
And then, just for clarification, the public can conduct their own initiative if they decide, right? I mean, I just want to make sure.
Always.
Right? And it would be a simple majority as opposed to a super majority, right? I'm just noting that because I've been contacted about it, so just want to make sure I stated. All right, thanks.
Okay, we'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to speak on this item?
Good morning again, Jennifer Smith, Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Really appreciate the discussion and the forward thinking on this. Obviously, we would be very much in favor of changing to a permanent canopy calculation. It aligns with the state, which is the whole process of the current cannabis tax force is aligning with the state as much as possible. I understand the desire of some people to go towards a gross receipts tax, but I also understand the calculation nightmare that it can become. I think that we're seeing, like, if we can get to the right balance of canopy tax rate, that it all kind of evens out and keeps the tax burden on the cultivator at a level playing field and less of a burden of calculation. So I'd be in favor with, we'd be in favor with those two options, and nobody really wants to go back to a ballot. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Anyone in Zoom?
Phone 6205.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I think I just heard Maria Turner say that they could revoke permits for non-compliance, but they don't. And I've heard this talked about in the cannabis past forth, if I understood it correctly, they could sign, but they haven't. And also, I hear Mr. Sullivan say he could give you more information that he doesn't yet have, but he needs more staff to do it. And both of those things go directly towards what I think is really needed, which is the correct county infrastructure to staff this program, so that it is grown responsibly, sustainably, healthfully, for all of Lake County, not just the private sector. What break, for instance, did walnut growers get? What break did, I mean, did fire survivors get? We didn't. We didn't get any break. So why is this one group getting so much staff attention, so many staff hours, and so much special privilege? Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else in the Zoom room?
Erin McCarrick.
Erin, if you want to state your name, you've got three minutes.
Oh.
All right, we can hear you.
Yep, absolutely talking without unmuting. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Supervisors. Thank you for bringing this up. And to the point before, to Jen's point, to some of the points that the Supervisors made, I think one of the biggest things is consistency. And so knowing what the tax rate will be, knowing when the tax bill will come, and having the staff that is going to be able to get, you know, the taxes out at the consistent time and known entity. It's building an entire industry. I mean, just as we saw, you know, the tech industry didn't exist until, you know, mid to late 90s, and we're still dealing with laws about privacy and about how do we live in this world. And so cannabis, legal cannabis didn't exist before this, and so now we are beyond medical. So now we are figuring out how to create this. And I thank very much Treasurer Sullivan for all of his work in establishing what didn't exist before, and all the work that has been done by the Supervisors Planning Commission. that has been done by the Supervisors Planning Commission. Mariaa, everybody, so thank you so much for doing that. And I also agree with not taking it to the voters and just kind of helping the county figure out how we can all work together to figure out how to create this industry. Thank you again for bringing this up.
Thank you. Anyone else in Zoom? Okay, we'll close the public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spatier?
Just last comment. State law requires that every cannabis project, whether it be ten thousand square feet or many, many acres, to go through the CEQA process. Normal standard agriculture does not always have to go through that process, depending on if they need a grading permit or depending on the kind of public comments they receive. Some do go all the way through to the EIR. And there's zero taxes that I'm aware of that we are collecting on any of our agricultural products being grown, unless, of course, it's processed to the point that it's taxed when you purchase it with a sales tax. So that's the reason there's not the level of staff time being spent on other things that are being grown in the ground, and that's the reason that we're not talking about their taxes because we can't reduce zero. So just wanted to make that point, that state law prohibits us from talking about certain things.
There are other subsidies available for agriculture.
And there are.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm putting pen to paper, just, I'm slogging a motion together here. And I think whatever, I'm just restating what I think I've heard. There's consensus to do.
Well, wait, we haven't heard from two Supervisors yet, so I don't. And this is, this section is just direction. So let's hear from you. And I haven't given my opinion either.
No, with this direction, I feel that bringing it to the voters on our behalf, I don't want to put your department in a burdened situation and whatnot. So I think that if the, if there's people that are desiring to do so, they can do it as a public, and they'll also have a lower threshold to abide by when it comes to, or to obtain if that comes to fruition. So that's where I'm at with it.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, and I think I stated my stance earlier. You know, obviously, making the permanent change of canopy, anything that we can do here at the board level, we'd just appreciate County Council working with everybody to bring that back to the board so we can make changes. I think what we've done now gives us an opportunity for this industry to establish itself over the next couple of years, and we'll really see where we are. And we've got a lot of work to do. We've got the Cannabis Task Force and other things, and we've got to look at not only just the taxing conversation, but what the industry looks like here. Is it, you know, lounge opportunities for some of the, you know, our storefronts, those types of things? You know, I really think that we need to look at all this and really help and establish the industry. And I think some of the steps we've made today will allow it to do it.
Yeah, I agree that we could, we should look at making the canopy element of this permanent. I would like to see another look at the penalty rate and the liens for enforcement are the two items that our Tax Collector brought up that I think might be helpful. And I would be in favor of bringing those three items back after budget sometime in the summer to look at permanent changes. And I'm just wondering if we have consensus for that.
Right, I agree with that, and that's also one of the reasons why. I mean, I don't want to go too far back or too far off, but why I was against the initial ordinance is I would like more time, like an extra month, like you mentioned, for the data. But that's the only reason why I opposed the last resolution. But with this, I agree with you, with your recommendations.
I don't have an appetite to bring this to the voters. I think we've come a long way with this, and I think we've got time to continue to perfect it and adjust to the industry as it grows. And we're heavily invested in what's already been created, and I don't think changing to a new, a new way of doing things is going to be helpful. I think that will set us back. So we, is what?
Just to clarify the third point. I had two down. What was the third point?
Well, the three points are the placing liens for enforcement and looking at the late penalty rate and then canopy. So those are the three things that we have consensus on?
Yep.
Okay, so that's your direction.
Well, I can just clarify that just a little bit. So two of those, I think, fell on the Treasury Tax Collector's lap, and that would be basically to look at graduated enforcement language, and the liens would be part of that. And then for the-
Your microphone's not on.
I'm sorry. So part of it, two of those would go to Treasury Tax Collector, it sounds like, for follow-up, and the other one, the permanent canopy calculation. If we were just to add some clarification to the request, it would be to direct Director Turner to propose somehow adopting a permanent canopy definition in the revised ordinance that is now being reviewed by the Cannabis Task Force. So would the direction include pitching the permanent canopy definition to Cannabis Task Force?
I think we're just giving it to staff, and I think the appropriate-
Coming back in the summer, right?
Yeah, and coming back in the summer. And I think it will probably be collaborative work that will happen, and I don't think we have to figure out exactly who does what. I think they can, they can handle it. Yep, all right.
Just wanted to say briefly that this, this program in general really supports something in my district that I'm really grateful for. So the Roadmap Task Force has been a very successful initiative in Clear Lake Oaks. So I just wanted to note that as well.
Right, thank you. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for your input and for coming here today and participating and always helping us make this process better for all of Lake County. Would you all like a little break?
Five-minute break.
How about an eight-minute break? Let's come back at ten forty-five.
I hope we got half the conference warnings.
All right, our six-point-seven item, nine forty-five AM public hearing for the consideration of the vacation of a portion of a roadway known as Roberts Road in the town of Middletown. A, a resolution of vacation, and B, irrevocable offer of dedication. Public Works.
I push this on.
That, it should be on.
Okay. Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. I'm Vance Ricks. I'm the county surveyor. And the item we have before you today is a vacation of a portion of Roberts Road in Middletown. We have the little screen that we can use. I think there was a map on there.
The intended item, there's a PDF at the bottom, right?
Roberts Road is located approximately about four miles south of the town of Middletown on the westerly side of Highway twenty-nine. Roberts Road is currently being used by twelve properties as its means of ingress and egress in public utilities. The offer for the public road easement, there we go, thank you, was accepted by the county as a public easement and utility easement in July of nineteen seventy-five. In June of twenty twenty-two, Mr. and Mrs. Lacy submitted an application. They are the property owners. If you can zoom that up a little more. That's fine. Of APN zero one three zero five four zero two. Citing safety concerns, they have petitioned the board to vacate a portion of Roberts Road, shown in red, that traverses through the middle of their property near their residence. January of twenty-sixth of this year, the Planning Commission heard the vacation and found it in conformance with the Lake County General Plan. If the board approves this vacation, shown in red, we ask them to accept the portion of Roberts Road as a public utility easement, shown in blue, which is approximately southeasterly of the existing road. Roberts Road is not a county-maintained road, nor is it proposed to be. Any vacation is only for the public's rights. Any existing ingress, egress, and utility easements that service the properties that use Roberts Road will remain in place. We're just vacating the public's rights to the line shown in red. One thing that was brought up in the Planning Commission during public comment is this area is known to have serpentine soils, and it was part of the former Maribel Mining Company, which mined mercury in the late nineteenth century to the mid twentieth century. But what we're asking the board to do is just vacate the existing easement for the public rights in accepting a new offer for an easement, shown in blue. That is the end of my presentation, and if you have any questions.
Just more comments. This is in my district, obviously, in South Middletown. I have been out and visited both parties that I do see here, Mr. Hall and Mr. Lacy here on the property. There are both property owners there that do use the road. You know, obviously, I thought Vance did a good job on the description. The current road, which I think is only, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the one that runs directly through the property is about ten to fifteen feet. It's very narrow.
I have not traversed the existing road.
Someone else could help. So I've been out there and looked at both properties. The in-red goes right through the residence. The new road, which is the blue one, which is twenty feet wide, I think.
Much wider, yes.
Much wider, you know, allows different access. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I've been out and visited the property, you know, and have drove on the road. Obviously, the board will make its decisions today. You know, folks will be here to make comment, I think, on both sides of the issue. But hopefully, we can, you know, move forward and support the vacation of the road, move this forward. It is an improvement, but there, I know there will be comments, and we'll hear those today. But I have been out to the property. I want to let everybody know that, and looked at the road and visited both Mr. Hall and Mr. Lacy on this issue.
Supervisor Spatier?
So I appreciate the information here. I think the reason for moving the road is perfectly logical. I would probably request the same thing. Based on the Lake County Air Quality Control letter that was in there, it does speak to the serpentine soils. It does speak to the potential for dust on Highway twenty-nine. That's my only concern, and I'm, I know that I reached out to some of our staff members, and I apologize for some of the last-minute questions. But I'm just looking to make sure that the new easement is made to standard so that there will not be that kind of situation of dust on the Highway twenty-nine. And what is the maintenance part of, for that road for the future to ensure that it doesn't fall apart and become a bit more of a nuisance for the highway? That's, that's my only concern, and just-
We're talking, we're talking about the new one.
About the new one, yes.
Maintenance of easements of such sort is controlled by Civil Code, and the way it reads is the easement owner must maintain their portion of that road in good repair. So it's the easement owner that maintains their portions, which would continue on through all twelve parcels that service Roberts Road. They would maintain the portion that they own. That's how maintenance will work on Roberts Road, and it's how it works existing. Where the existing utility access easement goes through, it's maintained by the property owners.
And as far as the standards of the road, because I believe the road is done. It is there. And I think we kind of had to catch up to go review and take a look at the road rather than being proactive and getting all the permits ahead of time. Just kind of curious if we've gotten, since the letter from Air Quality Control seemed to have come after the fact, I just, that's my only thing that I want to check in, is, is the road up to par? And if it is, it sounds like maintenance is already a part of the easement, and so that would solve all of my concerns.
That is correct. And there was an email sent from, let me get the name here, back in two thousand twenty-two, before this application was made, that the site was inspected, and it was determined that a grading or a permit was not required. And I will get you a copy of that letter.
And I think that was a packet as far as not required, but I didn't know if that meant that the road is up to standard rather than they didn't dig enough to have to, need to get a grading permit. Wasn't quite certain.
The road currently is in, when I drove on it, is in a better road than some of the roads I have driven on in this county. It's wide enough for fire and two cars to pass. I've never been on the existing road that traverses through the property, so I cannot speak to that.
Community Development Director, thank you. We did establish, when we were processing the General Plan conformity report, that this road is built to forty-two ninety and forty-two ninety-one standards. That was a requirement so that the general plan could support it as far as emergency personnel needs and requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone, anything else from the board? All right, I'll open it up for public. Did you have something else?
No, nothing else.
All right, open it up for a public comment. You can come up to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Glenis Dunbar. I live on Roberts Road. The staff report was just updated and put out yesterday, which is a short amount of time for response. And in that report, there's no mention of the following. The new road offered for dedication was constructed without the owner obtaining a county permit prior to beginning construction. The parcel in question has mapped serpentine and would therefore have required a permit from Air Quality and appropriate monitoring and mitigation measures. The property owner sought a permit two years later after the work was complete through Public Works and the grading inspector. Todd Elliott failed to check for mapped serpentine and failed to send the application for agency review, including to Air Quality. In response to a request for review from Community Development, Douglas Gerhart provided a memorandum that is attached to the back of the staff report. He makes recommendations and says, given the above, concerns are adequately addressed, and that is not just one concern, there's several concerns. The project as proposed with mitigation measures, which have not yet been specified by the county, can be supported for air quality concerns. The staff report cites regulations and code that support the project. However, regulations and code that raise red flags are omitted. For example, Chapter thirty of Lake County Code for Grading, which lists one of its goals to protect air quality from dust and asbestos, and states if grading is performed without a permit, the property owner will be required to obtain a permit even if the grading is complete. It also states that grading fees may be doubled. Although the staff report found the proposed project to be consistent with the Lake County General Plan on public facilities and services, transportation and circulation, staff did not point out the requirements in Chapter seven, Health and Safety, page seven dash three, on naturally occurring asbestos. The staff report also does not speak to the air quality provisions. Goal HS three, to reduce the generation of air pollutants and promote non-polluting activities to minimize impacts to human health and the economy in Lake County. And there are four more health and policy regulations that are not noted by the staff report. I ask the Board of Supervisors to be sure that all Lake County regulations and codes and all air quality recommendations are complied with prior to accepting the dedication of the new road on the Lacy property.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have a handout for the Supervisors. Could Mary ask you to distribute this? I think there's five copies. Thank you. This is similar to what I submitted.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Robert Hall.
Thank you.
I reside in Middletown, and I live on Roberts Road, further west of the Lacy property. My wife and I have three parcels on that road. I have one correction here on the first page. It should say August 24, 2019, not 1019. That's pretty obvious. So the reason I'm here this morning is to encourage you guys to take no action on this resolution at this time, because the process to build the road or construct the road was not followed by Mr. Lacy or the county. Just this morning, I received a copy from Planning Development, or Community Development, of the permit. It was dated June 23, 2022. There are no approvals on this permit. And speaking to air quality people in the last couple of days, they've never seen this permit before. And I think you should stop and go through the process, because Mr. Lacy constructed this road with no mitigation measures as required or suggested by Mr. Gerhart at Air Quality. They just put the cart in front of the horse. If you look on page 2 of 8, this is a Google photo taken in August 24, 2019. It's quite obvious, there is no old road, or there is no road there at that time. If you turn to Figure 3, you'll see there is a road, and that's the one Mr. Lacy constructed without a permit, without adjusting any of the mitigation measures, measures Air Quality asked for. And I don't know if there was a fee to be paid for this permit or not, but the whole thing was not done in a logical, legal, fair manner. Are there any questions from the board? I'm sorry. Okay, so in closing, you know, this is, in my mind, this is a mess. It's a failure on the part of the county to conform with their own regulations. It's a failure on part of Mr. Lacy to file for a timely permit, and this whole road was done from an area that's a known serpentine area, as shown on Page 1. Public health at risk, the residents are at risk, and this road is immediately adjacent to Highway 29. And the prevailing wind blows the dust onto the highway, endangering the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question. It looks like both roads go through the serpentine area.
That is correct.
Is the current road, is it paved or gravelled, or does it have anything?
It has gravel on it, that is.
Okay, and does the new road have gravel? Is it the?
That's the new road I'm referring to. I've never been on.
The new road is gravel. The original road is dirt.
I haven't been on what we call the old road. Have not been.
Okay. I don't need you, honey. Okay.
The new road's not serpentine.
Hi, I'm Sherri Lacy. Do I need to sign anything to speak?
No, just go ahead, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sherri Lacy, and this is our property we're discussing. And when we started it, it was when the whole world shut down, when the pandemic began, and we had our five grandchildren with us every day. And Rich came to the county on two occasions, and we got all the paperwork, and it was, if it was already, you weren't moving dirt out or dirt in, and we brought nothing in, but the new road is all gravelled. There is no serpentine. We have had our road tested over the years. We have had nothing but trouble and antagonism from the halls for many years, and they have not wanted this road. We would just like to have our property be our property with a gate at each end of our private, original dirt road, and all the dirt from that blew onto the highway for the last 37 years we've lived there. There isn't a lot of dust from the new road when it's been dry. Last summer, all the neighbors used the new road. The halls are the only ones that don't, Bob and Glenis, Dunbar Hall. They have antagonized us and terrorized us, and all we want is our private property and the safety of others. All of the other neighbors, including brand-new neighbors that just came to meet me this week because the halls had left a note at their gate saying what terrible people we were, could they come to this meeting and contest this, have used the new road constantly for two entire years. And we did go through the process, and we did get permits as soon as the world opened up again, and we ran as hard as we could to make this happen. And I've lived in Middletown my whole life. Jessica, I knew you when you were a little girl, and I knew your mom, and I know she'd be so proud of where you are today. But with the help of Vance and everyone in the departments up here, we have tried to make everything exactly copasthetic. And that's all we want, is to have our own place be our own place. And all of our neighbors use the new road, which Rich will maintain, as he has maintained the little tiny road for 37 years for everyone. So I hope that you will do it today. I hope you will vacate the road. It's been two long years of terrorism, and I'm ready for it to stop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have anyone else? I'm sorry, we're going to get to the people that haven't spoken yet. There's someone right behind you.
Hello, I'm Loy Frankum, and I own two parcels west of, up the road. And my concerns are, I'm pretty neutral on the road being moved. I think it's a great idea. Sorry, I'm not used to speaking in public. I have been using the new road because I have been slightly bullied by Mr. Lacy into using the new road, and I don't like that. I also have another concern that the original easement last summer in 2022, Mr. Lacy moved the fence in. On the original easement was about 18 feet wide, you know, 15 to 18, maybe 20 in some spots, feet wide. And he moved the fence in on the downhill side, right up to the edge of where people drive. And then he dug the ditch on the other side in to the road to make it much narrower. And I just wanted to point that out, and that concerns me, because that is my original deed at easement into my property. And that's pretty much it. I'm pretty much neutral on everything else. I just wanted to point that out. The halls are not bad people, and the Lacy's are not bad people, but they're squabbling about this. And I'm pretty much friends with everybody, so I would like to see it, I can't remember the right word, but cumulated, finished in a fashion that makes everybody happy. But I was concerned about the road being moved in. I mean, the fence being moved in on the easement. Okay, well, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. We have anyone else in the chambers that hasn't spoken yet? We have anyone in Zoom?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, if you'd like to come up one more time?
No, that must I pick.
Okay. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Do we have any? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, quick question for staff. Sounds like the road got built, whatever happened in COVID, but it sounds like there's been kind of a small legalization process that has taken place along the way. But it's unclear whether AQMD ever issued an authority to construct permit on this, and I assume it didn't happen at the time the road was constructed. But I guess the question would be, is one required on top of any other grading permit or something that might be necessary to legalize this road before we dedicate it, the new road anyway? So I don't know. I guess it's not a paved road, it's a graveltopped road or something like that. And my question to staff is, if this road had been properly disclosed and properly permitted at the front end, and no diss to those people that proceeded without that, would it have been subject to an authority to construct permit? If one was not pulled, is one required now to continue this legalization process before we act today?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have an email from June 16, 2022, from a Mr. Todd Elliott. He worked in grading in stormwater at the county. And on the last sentence, he says that, in my opinion, that the improvements conducted by Mr. Lacy would not normally trigger the necessity to obtain a simple grading permit. It seems like it was found that the activity did not require. It was inspected by Mr. Michael Rivera.
Thank you. My question had to do with an air quality control permit, not a grading permit. So thank you for that information.
Okay, that I can't speak to.
Director Turner?
I also cannot speak to that, but I'd be happy to email Doug real quick. I'm sure he's probably listening in. But, but yeah, just to support what Surveyor Rick said, is that Todd Elliott is our grading inspector. He did go through the checklist regarding evaluating what the work that had already been done to establish that, yeah, it did not qualify for requiring even a simple grading permit. And I will send an email out to Doug.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I'll restate exactly what was just stated, which is if there's no trigger for the grading permit and the fact that it meets 4290 and 4291, I'm, I'm ready to move forward. I think all of those things speak for themselves, and I hope that the neighborhood can find some better common ground than today's topic.
Do you have anything?
No, for myself, obviously, like I said, went out to property, met the, you know, both folks on the road. It was requested to go through the process. The process has been gone through. It's here at the board now to move forward with this. I know the woman who spoke second about some of the feuding that's going on out there, I'm hoping too that we can move forward. But sometimes when you make decisions, there's going to be folks that are happy and unhappy. But I think if you go out there and look at the improvements, we're moving forward with a positive step here in that area. And there are multiple folks, and this is, Roberts Road for myself has been, been to this board before on another issue, and we did make some changes for some other folks, the halls, about widening the entrance, if there's going to be some expansion that happens there. So I think, you know, we've been moving in the right direction to make it as amenable to all that live out there, and also safe for those folks for 4290 and 4291, opportunities for our first responders to be out there. As we all know, St. Lena is the one spot that has not burned completely in the South County on, on our south side. So, so those are all concerns that we're always moving forward and trying to improve ingress and egress in those areas. That's all I have, but I'm ready to move forward.
You want to take action?
Yeah, if, if, there are no more comments. I just want to be clear, I got two. The board finds the evidence. I'm offering the resolution. Let me see. So I'm going to offer the resolution.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
No.
And Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, four. That is correct.
And so I move also to approve the irrevocable offer of dedication?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we will move on to our 6.8, 10:30 a.m. item, discussion and possible direction to extend the temporary emergency warming shelter in North Lakeport and to develop an interim shelter crisis plan. Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Oh, yes, right. Supervisor Sabatier and Green, as soon as, yep, he's out. Thank you.
I would like to ask if our COC, our vice chair, is with us, if she can come up and sit on the chair?
Can you come up?
Thank you very much. And Supervisor Green, I started, I started off the first conversation for cannabis. We have both our names on this one. Would you like to start this one off, since this is in your district?
Thank you. Yes, I'm very proud that our current temporary emergency warming shelter is in my district and has been successfully providing services to well over 100 unhoused individuals at this point. And I think people here will be able to speak to just the positive beneficial impact that it's had, not just on the people who have obtained shelter, but people in our communities who, who kind of suffer from some of the adverse consequences that come with having homeless populations being unsheltered in our communities. We're coming up at the end of, we're coming up toward the end of the original letting of the contract for the emergency warming shelter that was done in January. That was done accompanied by a resolution declaring a shelter urgency. We're all learning this as we go, the state law that allows us to create that resolution, any number of other state laws that really put the, the idea that we need to move forward and craft permanent solutions toward addressing our homeless populations. It's just a very complicated thing. So first things first, thanks so much to Behavioral Health Staff, Lake County Continuum of Care, all our partner agencies that provided input into this first warming shelter contract and have provided constructive criticisms and kudos as this emergency operation has proceeded. What's before you to do is basically the first step, and that would be extending, if possible, the, the current iteration of this emergency warming shelter. It is going to be warmer outside, so I don't want people to get hung up with the, the idea that our warming shelter is tied to the thermometer. As we look forward, state law that applies on this has a pretty broad palette of terminology for interim housing options that fall somewhere between an emergency shelter and a permanent low-barrier navigation center, I think is the preferred term there. But since we did declare an interim shelter, since we did declare a shelter emergency in January, that did trigger a requirement for us to kind of come up with, what are you doing now? And to report to the legislative agencies that kind of track this issue, what, what we're doing here. So without belaboring the point, in the, in the staff memo, you'll see there's basically three recommended actions there. The most basic one is, do we find enough value in the emergency warming shelter that we can extend that contract, should extend that contract to continue operations to the extent possible under that contract? And then a couple of other actions, kind of look forward to the future, what's next? You know, we're probably reaching the maximum shelf life for this emergency resolution. We're probably years away from the practical consideration and construction of permanent facilities to shelter our unhoused individuals and provide them navigation services. So what are we going to do in that awkward phase in the middle? So there's also a couple of requested actions in here that would give direction to staff to start kicking the tires on that. You know, what, what if we have to end the sunset, the emergency warming shelter contract? What can we do in the meantime to bootstrap what are called interim sheltering options? And that can be any number of terms, bridge housing, I've heard of rapid rehousing, and I'll defer to staff on all, all the goodies that are available under HHAP and other funding programs for those interim shelter options. And so one of the proposed actions would be, ask the space use committee to see if we can continue using the former juvenile hall property beyond the sunset of this initial contract, and whether it would be appropriate to, to look at creating basically Shelter 2.0 and create an interim. basically shelter 2.0 and create an interim shelter operation out there. And then also we want to highlight that we already do have a plan in partnership with the city of Lakeport, who's here today. We have both tag teamed on a earmark request to Congressman Thompson that would give us some preliminary money to design permanent facilities. So I probably flogged this horribly, but we're in the middle of what I think has been a really useful, valuable thing, this interim, this urgency warming shelter at the former juvenile hall facility. I think that has provided us proof of concept that we may be able to extend at that same property, some form of interim sheltering operations. And I would like us to commit as a county and a staff to look into that. But I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul. I do want to point out that we do have a longer term vision and we are reaching out to Congressman Thompson for help on that. And I'll leave it at that. And Supervisor Sabatier, to pick up any pieces that I left?
Okay. Before I get started, I want to make sure and introduce Kimberly Guerra. She is, actually, I don't even know your position at Redwood Community Services.
Program manager.
You are the program manager. She is our vice chair for Continuum of Care. I know we had a meeting yesterday with approval to move forward with the extension. I don't know if she wants to speak on that conversation or what we're looking for.
Certainly, yeah. Kimberly Guerra, Redwood Community Services, Vice Chair of Lake County Continuum of Care. We did have a special meeting held yesterday around 4:00 p.m. in which the executive committee and then the public came together to discuss the potential of extending a contract for the current emergency warming shelter. There were many discussions about what to do in the interim. We reviewed budgets. And I do understand that we had discussed the idea that if we were able to extend this emergency shelter, it would be for only the next 90 days. And during that 90 day time, we would be working on developing a very robust RFP, Request for Funding, so that we can ensure that there are specific guidelines and safeguards in place, which includes auditing protocols. But we did also decide as a committee that should we extend this 90 day contract with Sunrise Special Services, that we will be requesting that any change to the budget that exceeds 10% in every, in any line item would prompt a budget modification request that would need to go through the Continuum of Care and then the county. And so we did vote on that. It did pass. And so we are bringing that information here today in hopes that we can extend the shelter, at least for the next 90 days, while we develop a plan and develop an RFP for an interim shelter program.
Thank you very much. And so I will say that we have found some inconsistencies in comparison to what we anticipated. I can describe that some of those inconsistencies can definitely be due to the ramping up. They opened up earlier than anticipated and eventually got to the staffing levels that they needed to have, which made for some difficulties early on. And then, of course, there was the snowstorm where, working with OES, they were now open 24 hours a day rather than 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. So there was definitely some changes that occurred during that. Hence why we're looking at a more robust safeguards for the next RFP. However, over 100 individuals have been to the warming shelter. Some of those individuals are now working through Behavioral Health Services for extra help. Some of those individuals have been found housing. And we want to make sure that we don't shut down that momentum where eventually those people will just not have a place to go and will go right back where they started, which makes us lose everything that we've worked for. And I will share my screen here for probably with the most important part of the conversation, which is money. And so currently, H hap round two, the county has $35,701.50. We used $153,600 already to pay for the first 90 days contract that we approved. So that's what's left in the county level for H hap round two. There's still $310,000 from the COC H hap round three that's available. And our 90 day contract, as I just stated, was for $153,000. So already just those two, and I am absolutely cherry picking what's available, but those two are available to help fulfill the payment of the $153,600 to extend it at 90 days, at 90 days more. And then just for the second part of the conversation, if the chair doesn't mind my going into this, in the future, and actually, some of this we've already received, we all sat here and reviewed the H hap round four plan as well as the HHIP plan that we submitted to the state. This was actually one of those, I believe it's the HHIP, was the one that the governor stopped and challenged us and said, we need to do better because the change in homelessness, I think, was averaging about 2%. And I could be wrong, it could have been the H hap round four that the governor stopped. But we submitted these things. It went through the Board of Supervisors. We anticipate $419,000 from H hap round four for the COC over the course of two years. Expected first payment will be in six months. H hap round four for the county, $393,000 over the course of two years, expected first payment in six months. And then the HHIP for the COC, we're looking at over, it looks about $3 million. And we've already received the first $563,000. And so the idea of how do we move forward? How do we look at something more permanent? The money is coming in. And that was our anticipation in submitting those plans to the state for these funds was to look at permanent housing. And so in front of the board are a few requests. One is to say, yes, we're interested in continuing the warming shelter. By April 25th, I believe that's the correct date, we plan to bring back a contract extension. Today is not an approval of the 90 day extension, it's the approval of continuing to do these things in our facility. In order to get the approval, we also need to direct staff to go to the space committee to say, ask them if they still want to allow the use of that facility for the warming shelter. And then the third one is an ask, even though it's already mandated, by doing the declaration of the shelter crisis, automatically by July 1st, we need to submit to the state a shelter plan. But we feel that that shelter plan will help us have a blueprint for what does, what does the plan look like to get to permanent sheltering? And from that plan, at that point, we can come back and decide what's our timeframe and what's our next steps. And so those are the three asks that we are asking today. And again, with the COC's approval as well to wanting to move forward and utilizing the funds that are available.
So I just have a question. I know you intend to go to the space committee, but has there been any discussion with probation as it's their building?
No. That's part of the space committee conversation.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering if...
No, no, no. Good point, good point. I know that they've been very kind and have said yes all the time to allow us to continue. And to be honest, I had not thought of that. And so I appreciate the comment.
And I can't remember in the agreement, is there rent being paid or is it waived? Is that in...
I know that they are paying for utilities. I do not believe that there is a rent, but they are paying for the entire service being rendered. It looks like somebody knows better than me.
No.
No rent.
No rent, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I know there was questions about zoning for the use there. And that's covered under the emergency temporarily?
Yes. And that's why also we are asking to wait for the shelter plan, because maybe a rezone is not the appropriate first step we need to take. With a shelter plan, we'll know exactly what's first, what's second. And maybe we'll be looking at a different facility at that point. I don't know.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
No, you know, I just think the long-term plan, obviously, is going to have to, you know, we want to make sure public comment and everything gets out there. I know when we first started using this facility during the pandemic, we did have folks that come from that community that definitely wanted to be able to have their voice heard, you know, of what would be going in there potentially for long-term for the county. So obviously, on all three of these, I think for me, I definitely support it. Obviously, putting more work on our departments is always a challenge. But I think the space committee, we can meet that timeframe within the 90 days, you know, or to get back to it. Would the space committee have to meet before the April 25th? Is that what the request is?
That would be the request.
Okay, all right. But overall, support it. It's much needed in the communities. I think there's going to be other conversations coming down from the state looking for places like this. I know myself and vice chair and Chair Pyska are going to be asked by Senator Wire to go to a meeting, I think, in July. And we'll make sure to attend that and see what information comes out of there. So yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward with all the requests.
Okay, we'll open it up for public input. If we have anybody in the chambers, you can come up, state your name and speak for three minutes.
Come on up, Joan.
Joan Moss, I'm in favor of keeping the shelter open. But I do want to know, why were the children moved out of that facility in the first place? And then probation department did take over and run offices there. And I just would like to know the history of why it was not acceptable as a juvenile hall.
Okay. I think we're going to stay on topic today. So if you want to come up, thank you.
My name's Suzie Glover, and I work at the warming shelter. I'm going to read a letter from a friend of mine, Catherine Waters. She's a senior who's disabled in Lucerne.
You can lower the microphone if you need to.
Okay. "To whom it may concern, about 45 years ago, when I became a nurse, there was no question about the patients we took care of and the fact that life was precious and part of our nursing oath as registered nurses. There was no concern over how much money a patient had, or their politics, or their color, or their weight, or anything else regarding the quality of care we were supposed to give to our patients. Keeping the patient's life as a priority was a basic human right and respect. A warming center absolutely saves lives. And now that I am a disabled senior citizen, during the past winter, I knew I could possibly be faced with death not having heat while I was in a well insulated home during the three day power outage across the lake. At that time, I went to knowing there were other human beings who had no shelter at all and very little likelihood of survival. Warming shelters should be considered sacred because they save lives. And how someone can deny funding to literally save human lives, I find questionable with all the grants given from both state and federal levels and the fact we can put jars in every single business within Lake County for small donations that add up quite quickly. People who realize that we are talking about fellow human beings, very lives, all the way from childhood to the quite elderly, understand the importance of a warming center. I have concerns about the people who are making this decision and not working to truly find ways to be able to fund this because life is a priority and under our constitutional rights and has been always, and has always been a top priority in making monetary decisions to giving help to others. With more and more children and families becoming homeless, they definitely need to be a priority. Please consider and work on this in a way that will benefit all the citizens in Lake County and make us proud. And since life is a constitutional right, there must be federal funds and grant money for this without devastating the economy of this country. Sincerely, from the heart of someone concerned regarding human life, for my best, my best wishes and hopes, Catherine Waters."
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you. And I want, oh, I am Annie Barnes Keys, co-founder of Sunrise Special Services, which is administrator of this grant. I want to take this opportunity to first say thank you because we could not be where we are today had it not been for all the partnerships of the county agencies from behavioral health, law enforcement, hospitals, social services, and of course, the COC, who has provided the team that's making the shelter with comments. And we, just like any new project, we grow. And so I'm grateful for the growth and the handholding and the comments and the visits that we have had in these 90 days. I also want to take this opportunity, because Sunrise is a very small nonprofit, very organic, began here in Lake County, that what we really do in health, housing, social services is rooted in working as an advocate for voices that are not always heard. And this project is certainly one of those, where we do work with a promote-orus model from the bottom up. And it's taking those that we intend to serve, and they are the ones, together, we empower and change and grow in the communities. So thank you for this opportunity, and we hope the next 90 days will even be more, the next phase of this, of working with total person that we know, that what the shelter has done is has been a safe, welcoming place for those unhoused. They provided opportunity and environment to work towards a quality of life. And most important is the integrated approach of healthcare, law enforcement, and unhoused advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Kurt McKelvey. I'd just like to ask the board to clarify each Supervisor Crandall's reason for recusal on this agenda item?
That's up to him, not us.
It's his choice.
Do you have any knowledge of, as to the specific reason?
It's his choice. We all choose to recuse ourselves if we feel it's important.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Yvonne Cox, Director of the Emergency Warming Shelter. It has been challenging, and I see now the importance of this warming shelter. Always knew we needed it. But now, after working and doing it, I see the need is far greater than I ever imagined. We have literally changed lives, saved lives. We have helped people get into housing. We have hired people. We have gotten people jobs outside. We have gotten into place resources, social services, social security, Dr. Donda. We have the support of the community, and that's what really makes this work. At first, as you guys know, the low barrier, I was questioning it as as to, you know, is this really a good idea? Is this safe? But after working it, I've had up to date, five different residents surrender their drugs, get into programs, and are now in our NA classes every week. It has made profound changes in people's lives. And to stop the momentum now would be ludicrous. To get everybody trained and everybody up to par. When we first started this, I kind of had a mutiny. We had a person that had some really bad morals that was hired to work in the position, and it didn't work out. We had to relieve her. Well, when she walked out, two other people walked out with her. So now I was stuck with nobody. Out of survival skills, I kept the momentum going. I did the cooking, I did the cleaning. When it was questioned about how I had so many hours, if you would have told me I was going to do that, I would have told you I couldn't. I can't even imagine. But survival skills kicked in. I saw the need. I saw the people. They needed a place to be safe, to be fed, to be warm, to get back on track so they can navigate, so they can get back into population, back into their own lives. So with that being said, the importance of this is beyond the scope of words. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers?
Good morning, Board. My name's Brad Rasmussen. I'm the chief of police in the city of Lakeport. I've got a lot of experience working with the homeless in our city. In fact, it's my understanding that somewhere around up to 20 people a night are out of my city are currently using this facility. First of all, I do agree with the short-term 90-day extension to keep something available for the progress that's been made. But I also agree that a more thorough review and RFP is necessary to make sure that we make the right decision going forward because something more permanent... something more permanent and more extensive, in my opinion, is really needed to address the problem in, in this county. I just want to give a couple of examples. The, going back to Elijah House, when that was available, you know, we had some, some great success in the homeless we were working with that had behavioral health and drug and alcohol addiction issues. And by getting them into something like this, we were able to finally convince them to go to their mental health appointments, go to drug and alcohol counseling, and, and get off the drugs and get more stabilized. In one example, I can, I can cite going back when that was there, we had an individual that was causing upwards of a hundred police calls a year. Well, once we got him into Elijah House and all those appointments, he was stabilized. But then that facility closed, and that person was now back on the street. Fortunately, this has now come about, and they're able to use that. So I think it's, it's important that we not lose progress from where we're at and continue to work on a better, more permanent solution and make sure that the right decision is made on that when the time comes. Thank you.
Chief, before you leave, just a follow-up question. I know you spoke during our first meeting last Friday, and was wondering if you can give us, what's the impact on your police activity or your calls that you have by having these facilities?
Thank you for bringing that up. What I can say is that a significant portion of our calls in the City of Lakeport deal with the unhoused, particularly those that have drug and alcohol and/or mental health conditions at the same time. When, going back to Elijah House, we were seeing a decrease in those issues once we had some sort of housing, although it's, it was just temporary. And then, once that closed, those calls again increased, and we had more problems on the street. Now that, that this facility has been open for the last two months, I can say that I'm starting to see some relief for some of the calls that we're, we're dealing with because, and this is not perfect, it's an overnight shelter, we really need more, but it's something to get people off the street at night and kind of set them up for the next day. And, and I, I can say that I have seen where we're starting to see a decline again because of that. So that's kind of why I mentioned the, if, if we lose progress and this goes away, then, then all those problems are immediately back, and we have to again start over at ground zero, or at the beginning again. And, and I don't really think we should keep doing that, I think we need to keep something going, do, do the right work to make sure that the right decision is made on what is the best solution for a more permanent situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name's Alicia Adams, and I work for Lake Family Resource Center. My current assignment is with the Lakeport Police Department, and I do outreach to our homeless community. I've been doing this for about seventeen months. I could say that when you're working with people in the field, on the street, when they're in crisis, if they haven't had a meal, if they haven't had warmth, there's really nothing else that's on their brain. Having a facility like this allows people to then engage with services and programs that are being offered to them. I've seen a significant improvement with the folks that I work with, with there is availability of food, clothing, shelter, hygiene, et cetera. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Kevin Ingram, City of, Lakeport City Manager. First, just a big thank you to Supervisors Green and Sabatier for bringing this item forward. I just kind of reiterate what other folks have said. I mean, I think this is a, a true learning experience for everybody. I don't think there's anybody who's gonna say that everything has moved perfect, but I just want to reiterate, it's been said by Ms. Cox, also Chief Raspisson and Elisa in our response. We are in a better position today than we were before. We've seen this pattern. I know there were issues in regards to the way that the Elijah facility was running, but at the same time, we did see a marked change, taking a step back when that facility did, did close. So I think, you know, moving forward, I, I like the, the plan that's been, that's been put forward here. I, I don't want to get involved in the, the politics of the County Space Committee, but, but I do think that this facility does offer a lot of tools and resources that are necessary. The City of Lakeport is certainly committed to, to taking a, a bigger role in this process. I think that's evidenced through our, our partnership already and the congressional ask with Congressmen Thompsons. It is our goal to, to move forward with a, kind of a full-service, low-navigation center in the City of Lakeport, where I think it makes more sense where those closer to transportation-related facilities, other pieces and things like that. But in all honesty, that's gonna take some time, and in the meantime, I think this is a great option moving forward. I'd like to see it move out of the emergency piece. I think, you know, coming back every ninety days is, is a, you know, a big effort on everybody's part when these resources can be, time resources, that is, can be utilized more in these efforts. We're, we're learning, I mean, this has not been the domain of the cities historically, but certainly understanding that we have a greater part to play as this mental health and homelessness crisis is, it's, it's not just here, it's, it's everywhere. The mayor and I will be attending the, the joint session that CSAC and Cal Cities is hosting tomorrow, certainly getting out there and making sure. I heard Supervisor Simon talk about a future meeting in July with Senator McGuire. I think it's very important that we continue to have a unified front with our state representation, that we need more resources. This is a bigger problem than I think anybody can see. So is this step the answer to everything? No, but it is definitely putting us on a better trajectory than we would be without it, and we, we want to definitely play our part as a city. We're benefiting from this, and we know that we need to be a stronger partner moving forward. Lastly, I'll just end with, I think from our learning perspective with Elisa and the crisis response worker that we've had in place for close to two years now, we're making very great connections, but going back to that Maslow hierarchy of needs sort of things, if these, you know, these number-one housing pieces aren't being met, then we can't get further. This is offering an opportunity to break through that roadblock and, and get people plugged into other services.
Thank you.
I heard my bell. Gong.
Can I add one more comment?
Of course.
Thank you. I also just wanted to add, and I think it speaks to everybody who's participated here today, the reason why this came as a special meeting to the COC was because the consensus in our general meeting on Thursday, April 6th, was that there was a desperate need and desire to see this continue on, and that is why, that is what prompted the special meeting that we took the vote on. So I know that there's plenty of people here that are advocating for that as well, but to, you know, we have a rather large, general COC membership, and there was quite, quite a lot of interest about maintaining these services as well.
Are you giving public input?
Yes, I just have one quick question. So just to kind of reiterate the original question as to the recusal, certain officials, including City Council members, planning commissioners, and members of the Board of Supervisors, have a mandated manner in which they must disqualify from decisions made at a public meeting, including closed-session decisions, and must publicly identify a conflict of interest and leave the room before the item is discussed. Secret recusals are not allowed under California law. So again, what is the reason for the recusal?
Well, I guess he can tell you when he comes back in.
Thank you. We do have two hands in Zoom.
Okay.
Carrie Manning?
Go ahead, Carrie, you can state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Carrie Manning from Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I supervise our peer support centers, and this is near, this is my heart song, working in housing. I was unhoused myself a couple of decades ago for about three or four years, and I just want to reiterate what everybody else has said. You know, at our peer support centers, we've been offering referrals for treatment services, we have life skills groups, and empowering the guests that come from the shelter by assigning chores, we have clothing closets, we have lunch there every day, they have snacks, we have group stuff that people have been doing, and I really feel like the warming shelter is a stepping stone in our housing continuum of care. And I feel that this is going to help bridge the gap that we've all talked about this morning, like the transitional housing, the more permanent housing. This is a great opportunity, and I think lots of other doors are gonna be opened by this. So, thank you.
Thank you. And who else do we have?
The other hand went down.
Okay, so there's no other public input, we can bring it back to the board, and this item is to provide direction?
I'll just add one thing, there's been a lot of talks about the conversations that are occurring. I know both myself and Chair Piscow will be in Sacramento this week for the combined meeting that is happening there, and happy to hear that Lakeport will be there. I was pretty much assuming that you would be, but I think that's gonna be a healthy conversation, because it's the first time that it's, it, the conversation is created with, we're together in this, this is not a county issue, this is not a city issue, this is an all-of-us issue. So I hope that good things come out of there, and CSAC just did open up a new grant portal on their website so that you can type in what you're looking to get accomplished, and it helps you find some of the grants for the projects that you would like to get done. And so trying to make things as simple as possible for local jurisdictions to navigate through the needs, because the needs are very different depending on where you are. But looking forward to consensus today so that we can move these things forward, come back on April 25th with an extension contract, and asking the Space Committee and requesting for the shelter plan to come back to us at a time where it can be reviewed by the COC and the board before July 1st.
Okay, do we have consensus on all three items?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Then staff has their direction, we can bring in Supervisor Crandall, he can answer the question, and then we can close out this item. There was a question about your reason for recusal.
Yeah.
And so just if you could state that for the public, and then we can close this item.
Not a problem. Yes, I recuse myself because my wife is consistently attacked by a certain faction of people, due to the fact that they just dislike me. So, because she's on the continuum of care, I don't feel comfortable making a vote to incur more negative attention to my wife. You know, it's fine this faction continues to attack me, and I've expected that since I took seat, but I don't think it's fair that she's consistently attacked, so that's the reason why I recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is 6.9, 11:15 a.m. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I said 9:15.
Consideration of Resolution Rescinding Resolution Number 201705, Formation of the Middle Region Town Hall, Mirth, and 2018-334 Amendment from Mirth to the Lucerne Town Hall Lath, and Establishing the Central Region Town Hall CIRF as a Municipal Advisory Committee for the Central Region in District 3. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, and so as you remember, there was a presentation conducted to consider a restructure of the Municipal Advisory Committee known as LATH, initially implemented as work, so we're looking to transition it to CIRF. And so after considering the feedback from the community and public comment during the presentation on March 28th, it is evident that establishing CIRF is more, is the most plausible for the Central Region of District 3. And so with that, I'll just pull up the proposed map, and that is how the new boundaries will look, and that's really all I have.
Okay, anything from the board? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to come and speak, you can state your name and have three minutes.
Hi there, my name's Kurt McKelvey, a thirty-year resident of Lucerne, and I encourage the board not to approve the proposed resolution before you today. On December 21st, the LATH held a special meeting to discuss a project to convert the historic Lucerne Hotel Building into a homeless youth shelter. The community members expressed a range of opinions at that meeting, but the overwhelming majority of those present had serious concerns about the proposed project and were in support of a LATH resolution condemning the project. The resolution to condemn the project was passed unanimously by the council and was then sent to the County of Lake. Shortly after this, all five council members were then told that all of our terms were ending at the end of the year, in spite of the fact that the District 3 Supervisor had assured the chair in November that the terms would be corrected before the end of the year, so that the terms would conform to the LATH bylaws that specify two-year staggered terms. Due to this sudden and unexpected end of terms, we attempted to resolve this through email communications and public input in these chambers, and were ultimately told that we just needed to reapply. So far, I've only been given a series of conflicting and nonsensical reasons as to why this has all happened, and we reapplied, and since then, our district supervisor has refused to appoint anyone and has not given any substantive reason or justification for that. I believe these actions and this proposed restructuring of the LATH is really an attempt to erase the work of the LATH in the previous months, specifically the actions of the special meeting in December. I now submit the minutes of the LATH December special meeting to the county. These minutes were approved at the March 2023 meeting of the LATH, which were held pursuant to California Government Code Section 1302, and in accordance with the LATH bylaws. Here is also a copy of the resolution condemning the project. I also have pages of petition signatures in support of the LATH resolution that was passed at the December special meeting. There have been attempts to portray those in support of drastically altering the LATH as being a majority, when in fact, it is more probable that they are actually a very small minority, and many pushing for these drastic changes don't even live in Lucerne or even in the proposed area. I suspect, I suspect that once news spreads through Lucerne that these drastic changes to the town's official representation, the community will be upset about it. These changes are unprecedented, nothing like this has been done with any other council in the county. I suggest that at the very least, you should hold an informational meeting in the town of Lucerne to gauge the community's actual views before any action is taken by this Board of Supervisors. If you make these changes, it will not only undo much of my work on the council, but also it'll undo the work of dozens upon dozens of community members who have contributed to the LATH throughout the years and have strived to give our town its own voice. It will reduce the ability of the council and place undue limitations on it, and I believe it is a gross disservice to the community.
Your time is up.
In closing, I have four questions for the board.
Your time is up.
How long has this change been in?
Your time is up. Three minutes, thank you. Is there anyone else in Zoom? Oh, I'm sorry, we've got someone else in the chambers. Come on up. Okay, is there anyone in Zoom?
We do have a hand up in Zoom, John.
Okay. John, you can go ahead and unmute and state your name, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, John Jensen, Lucerne. The Lucerne Town Hall continues to meet with the support of the community in the Lucerne Area Revitalization Association, yet Supervisor Crandall has failed to attend for months since he first attempted to cancel those meetings, and is now radically altering the bylaws far beyond simply extending the boundaries. Including non-resident property owners on max is uncommon in Lake County. When it last came up, it was not supported by the Town Hall, and that raises questions about the genesis of this scheme. Why have the residents of Lucerne been excluded from this important discussion? Of the max in the county, how many allow non-residents to sit on council? Why haven't you discussed this at the Town Hall? Who lobbied for this change? How many people lobbied for this change? Where do the people lobbying for this change reside? And what reason did the proponents state for such radical changes when lobbying?
Are you finished?
Those are my questions.
Okay. All right, did you want to, you can have three more minutes now if you'd like.
Oh, okay. I appreciate the additional time.
Yeah, there's no more hands in Zoom.
So, like I, like I was saying, if you make these changes, it will not only like I, like I was saying, if you make these changes, uh, it will not only undo much of the work that I've done through the council, but also dozens upon dozens of other community members throughout the years that have, that have contributed to the, to the council. Uh, and particularly the idea, the concept that the Lucerne really needs its own voice. That was the whole reason why it was changed from the Middle Region Town Hall to the Lucerne Area Town Hall. That, that was uh desperately needed. The, this, uh, the community of Lucerne has been largely underrepresented uh through the county. Um, a lot of our needs have been unmet for decades. And we're just trying to resolve this through, you know, being active in our, uh, in our local government. And sometimes we're mischaracterized as being, um, you know, targeting certain people when really we're just trying to help our community. That's, that's all we're trying to do. We're all in this together, EJ. We should be anyway. Okay, and, and you know, uh, I, I did attempt to submit this to the board. I noticed nobody took this. I'm, I'd like to give the, thank you. Um, I'd like to give the there's the minutes. Those were approved at the March 2023 meeting of the LATH, which again was held pursuant to California Government Code Section 1302 and in accordance with our bylaws. Um, ultimately, I'd just like for the, the community to be able to continue with its, uh, with its representation without drastic changes done in these chambers without the input of the community. And uh, you know, lastly, um, you know, I respectfully request that the Board of Supervisors considers putting as much effort as you do into giving yourselves raises, patting yourselves on the back and suppressing the current representation of Lucerne. And you instead put that same effort and zeal into more productive things like uh prioritizing fixing the levees in Upper Lake, dredging our harbor in Lucerne and keeping up on basic county maintenance needs. Um, those I feel are the real priorities. This whole thing that you, that's going on right now is just a disservice to the community. So uh, the last four questions I'd like to ask, uh, how long has this been in the works? What is the compelling reason for the change? Um, how many people have asked for this? And why are you supporting a radical departure like this, but only for this one area? Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more public comment, then we'll close that out and bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I know. Some of that I'll cover. I'll do my best.
Okay.
So I know one of them was pursuant to some sort of, was it 1302? Um, Lloyd, can you help us with that and uh, if that is something that's covered? Because from my understanding, the three meetings that uh public input from both gentlemen stated, none of those meetings were uh they weren't from, see, I mean, are we going to have that still or? Um, the January, well, do you want to come back to the mic? I mean, are you opening public comment?
We've closed public comment.
I mean, he, he has a lot enough voice with the new meeting on his side.
We've closed public comment. Can you just continue, please?
So I was, I was just trying to be helpful. I wasn't trying to interrupt or interject. Uh, the, the meeting specifically that Section 1302 was utilized for was the March meeting of the LATH.
Okay, okay, but you, we'll just move on. All right, public comments closed. So go ahead.
I mean, I, can I say something or am I going to get, I mean, this is what I get even?
We're not having any more public comment.
This is common.
Let's bring this back to the board for deliberation. You can speak and then we'll, we'll take action.
All right, so I just wanted to make sure and touch base with county council on that 1302.
So the municipal advisory councils, the authority of the board to establish and create an operation of a municipal advisory council comes from government code section 31010. The municipal advisory councils that were established and now moving into SIRF, they're all subject to the requirements of the Brown Act. That's government code 54950. So that's where the discretion and the authority of the, of this board comes from in creating, establishing and uh, and outlining the operations of the municipal advisory council. And what's before the board today is uh, the uh, uh, resolution to form, essentially form the Central Region Town Hall.
Thank you for that. So um, that's one of them. I know that there was a statement that uh canceling meetings or something like that. I canceled one in December because of uh, the situation with uh, meeting being on a private property. There was a meeting conducted afterwards. I didn't even, I mean, we covered a lot of this, March and January, but I'm just going to reiterate. Um, so um, the meeting was held the next week, special meeting, did not interrupt, did not uh say they couldn't have it. I actually sent an update that wasn't informed to the public that was in attendance. So um, that's, that, that's neither here nor there. Um, this is basically just been something in the thought because of the fact that there is a population of 3,004 people in Lucerne. Um, of that, there is 1,657 voting members. Um, and of the area of the Lucerne Castle area, there is 1,076. So you're, there's a, there's an amount of people that aren't included in um, the Town Hall operation and a lot of it is, you know, there's a concept that um, some folks are not um there'll be people that are from outside serving. Um, there may be, but however, uh, that's that's the discretion of us as the board. So um, there's no situation where we want to lower the voice of Lucerne. That's the exact opposite of this. So um, I, again, I don't want to belabor the discussion we had uh, March 28th and uh I'm prepared to offer the resolution.
We had a lot of support at the last meeting too for the idea. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify. We're going to be citing the government code. Let's cite it accurately. Government Code 1302 would not apply to an appointed member of a municipal advisory council by my reading of it. So uh, whatever happened at those prior meetings, I wouldn't necessarily take that as gospel. Uh, I'm very supportive of any reasonable change needed um, to make a municipal advisory council that is truly representative and is dedicated to building consensus. Um, I think we've seen some examples where that doesn't always happen. And um, I, I did share with county council that, that question about property owners. I think that one line could benefit from a slight tweak to uh, say, non-resident property owners. I will point out that uh, in my Scotch Valley Advisory Council, I, I have both. I have bylaws uh, that say uh, you have to be a resident member. The original resolution establishing the council does allow for non-resident property owners and community organizations active within uh, the Scotch Valley area to, to get uh seats. As it turned out, our applicants were all residents. Um, but uh, depending on what you're reading, our bylaws or the resolution, which are inconsistent, uh, there is at least uh, the idea that non-resident property owners can contribute to an advisory council in a positive way. So uh, that would be the only suggested tweak if it's necessary. I don't know that it is. Um, but I'm, I'm supportive of this reorganization. I think it's important. I think it can be helpful to have a fresh start from time to time and uh, this might be a way to do that.
I think another thing is, is uh, folks that are not happy with this uh resolution and path forward, you know, they can always continue to have their own topics of discussion at their own private meeting. Um, that's what they've been doing the past three months and so that's fine as well.
Yeah, and I think our Vice Chair Simon brought that up, that the Lower Lake Town Hall is an action committee.
Fine example, yeah. We have the Midtown Area Town Hall, which is in a, you know, an advisory council approved by this board. And then obviously the Lower Lake Action Committee Group has, you know, has their own group. They're uh, they really like the opportunity that they don't have Brown Act compliance that they have to uh, move forward with, but it is a very active group. I, I work well with both groups. Um, but it comes with a little more challenges on the advisory council, but that is approved by this board as we move forward. So yeah, absolutely. There's nothing stopping our community members getting together, having meetings and set up other agencies to help their communities. And hopefully that's where we go with the conversations with all these boots on the ground, small things, whether it's cleanup days, those types of things to really move things forward in a positive direction. And I know this board has supported the Lucerne Area Town Hall or dredging uh, project. I know it's taking time. All projects take time. Uh, but that is something this board wholeheartedly supported and it will get done when all the permits and everything go through the process to get that completed.
Right.
We revive that for an economic development uh, boost uh, for that area.
Right. It's usually purported that we're not, but I work uh, hand in hand with uh Lars Ewing to try to, you know, to move this forward. And actually there is, there's a path forward right now and so.
We ready for action?
Yeah, I offer the resolution.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
Okay, so that is the end of our timed items. Is it, I think we should probably take lunch. Is that, and come back at 1:15? And we've got the, four more um, non-timed items when we come back at 1:15. Okay.
Three or four?
Well, including calendars. Oh, and?
We took care of the pulled item?
Yeah, we took care of it. Yeah, okay. So we will come back for 1.1 through 1.4 and then close session. So we'll see you at 1:15. Okay, welcome back from lunch. We're going to move to our 7.2 item, sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors. Consideration of resolution establishing an operating reserve and transferring funds into fund number 299 budget and number 8799 reserves. We have our Air Quality Management District, Doug Gerhart.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead, yeah.
Good afternoon, thank you. Um, and you, you pretty much covered uh, my whole discussion, but but the, the short version, the little extra detail, uh, we have funding that we've been carrying over year after year. It's said, it's one-time funding that we've been designated for projects. Um, and because of short staffing and other issues, we're just not we keep having things come up that have prevented us from getting to the projects. So based on what we're seeing for the coming year, we're not going to get them done in the fall, in this coming year. So we're going to put them back into reserves, put the funds back into reserves and um, start setting aside and try and work on this in another year, once we have uh, some additional staffing. Now, part of the issue, part of what we're trying to do is set up an operating reserve and that enables us to be able to hire staff because our, right now, we're, we're kind of maxed out on our staffing with the consistent year-to-year revenue that we have. So we want to set up an operating reserve so that we have additional revenue. We have a fallback should revenue shortfall, you know, should that fluctuation dip in a year and we don't have enough revenue to, to fully fund our staffing, we have a reserve to pull from for those years. Because it, for us, permit fees, they fluctuate a fair amount from year to year. So so that's what the operating serve is intended to do and eventually, hopefully, after budget, um, we'll come back with a more thorough reserve policy that we can kind of set up a policy for all of our reserves and, and get more direction on that. But that was our initial thought for the uh, the operating reserve is to get something in place. So we have that. And that would allow us to start recruitment on a second engineer or technician, depending on what is, what we can find. Um, and get those positions filled while we have our, you know, while our revenues were at that cap. So um, and then we, of course, we have our building reserve and that would be the solar and other maintenance items on the building. Um, we think that will, developing a solar contract and stuff is going to take quite a bit of time. So we can work on that in the coming year and, but it's not going to happen right away. We have some roofing projects and siding projects that have to be done before solar's put in because you can't get to the roof if the solar's installed. So those things are things that are, we're working on now for this, uh, hopefully this coming construction season. And then of course, vehicle reserve, uh, we know that EVs are going to be expensive, especially for the conditions and roads and places that we have to go in Lake County. Uh, you need a little bit more robust uh, model than, than other locations. So we want to make sure we have adequate funding set aside to start replacing vehicles with EVs once we have solar installed. So, so we're going to start putting fun, more funding into the the vehicle reserve so that we are able to do that transition as soon as possible.
Okay. Any questions? Any public input? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands.
Okay.
There are no hands in Zoom.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
There's nothing further. Madam Chair, sitting as the Board of Directors for Lake County Air Quality Management District, move that the Board of Directors adopt the attached resolution establishing an operating reserve and transferring funds into fund number 299, budget number 8799, building reserve, vehicle reserve and operating reserve.
Second.
All in favor?
I believe it was a resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution. Oh, right?
But it sounded to me like you offered the resolution.
You let me go that whole thing?
Absolutely.
Wow, I offer the resolution.
There we go.
Wow, thank you.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Green?
Aye.
And Director Pisca?
Yes.
I don't want to trip up somebody when they're going full speed.
It sounded good. It sounds all golden.
It's good seeing you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, item 7.3, consideration of the following advisory board appointment, mental health board, clerk of the board. And we have um the application from Kendra Wiegand.
I believe it's out of Kelseyville.
Yes, it is in my district.
Are you okay with it?
I am.
Okay, excellent.
Public comment?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to appoint uh, Kendra Wiegand uh, to the uh, Mental Health Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. 7.4, consideration of increase in county match amount for area agency on aging due to population change and recommendation by governing board to increase staffing. And this is from Social Services. I'm, I'm guessing we have Director Markatan?
Yes, she is on our panel. And she's coming.
Hello, yes, I'm here. And I, I believe um, we have the uh
Lisa Faraco is also on.
Yeah, Lisa Faraco and Dina Eddings Green are also. And I, Lisa and Dina will be presenting.
Wonderful, thank you. Good afternoon, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, can I share? Do I have the ability to share my screen for the presentation? I think that I do. Please let me know if you can see the presentation.
Yes.
Okay, um, my name is Lisa Faraco. I'm the program manager over the Area Agency on Aging at the Lake County Department of Social Services. I'm joined by Krista Markatan, our director, Dina Eddings Green, our program coordinator for the Area Agency on Aging and Nicole Streif, our Area Agency on Aging accountant. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of the program and then get into the funding that we're asking for. I provided a really detailed report with this, this agenda item. Um, I'm not going to hit every single item in the report, but I'll do an overview and we can always circle back. And if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Okay, so the Area Agency on Aging of Lake and Mendocino Counties operates under the direction of the Lake County Department of Social Services and the Area Agency on Aging, which I'm going to call AAA, moving forward just for, save myself here. Um, AAA oversees our long-term care ombudsman program. So what is a long-term care ombudsman? A long-term care ombudsman is a specially trained advocate who resolves complaints on behalf of people who reside in long-term care facilities like nursing homes and assisted living residences. Um, they investigate complaints. They have a very regular presence in these facilities. They um, assure that the interests of residents are represented to policymakers and governmental agencies. They provide educational programs to community and conduct in-service training to staff. And they witness that health, advanced healthcare directives and certain property transfers for residents. So the work they do, and this is just a tiny overview of the work they do, is, is really important.
Oh. Nothing, I was just gonna have you tell Dad. Nothing, I was just going to have you tell Dad.
Sorry.
Director Markatan, if you can please mute your microphone?
So, we'll get into facility metrics a little bit. The ombudsman program coordinator has oversight responsibility for 20 Mendocino County facilities and seven Lake County facilities. I don't need to go into the breakdown, you can see it here in the picture, but it's a combined count of 541 long-term care beds. So, there's one ombudsman and one volunteer to cover the 20 facilities in Mendocino, and the AAA coordinator serves as the ombudsman program coordinator and oversees the seven Lake County facilities as an ombudsman. So, now, we talk about the staff hours associated with the facilities. As you can see, these are our numbers for 2022. The numbers from Mendocino County are quite a bit higher than Lake County, and it's important to note that Mendocino County does have more facilities than Lake County does, but this also includes the time that our staff spends driving to these Mendocino County facilities, and one of them is Fort Bragg. You know, there are, it's a lot of drive time associated with driving from Lake County. Another important thing to note is that complaints only become a documented complaint if they cannot be resolved through information and assistance. So, that's a big part of what our ombudsmen do, is they investigate complaints, they speak with the residents, they try to resolve these before they would become a documented complaint. So, funding, how do we fund this program? Funding for the AAA of Lake and Mendocino Counties comes from the California Department of Aging, the counties of Lake and Mendocino, through a joint powers agreement, a specified match, and the Lake County Department of Social Services. This is what the JPA states for the match. Each county's financial match percentage shall be based on the number of seniors in each respective county. This calculation shall be established utilizing the most recent state census data available. So, how do we determine what the match amounts are? We look at our population counts, and these are the counts of people in each county that are age 60-plus. And you can see, we have a very high percentage of people in our counties, both counties, that is age 60-plus. So, the county match amounts were last updated in fiscal year 1314. They are currently set at $94,655. Lake pays 45%, and Mendocino pays 56, and that's based on the percentage of seniors. The Lake County portion is $41,962. The Mendocino County portion is $52,693. So, historically, this match amount has been used to offset the cost of salaries and benefits for staff. For fiscal year 1314, salaries and benefits totaled 253,000, pardon me, and $608, and for fiscal year 2223, salaries and benefits totaled 348,862. There has not been an increase to the match since that was determined in 1314. So, why are we asking for funding for a new position? The long-term care ombudsman program regularly undergoes program monitoring by the state long-term care ombudsman. The report that we received at the end of 2022 had corrected, had findings requiring corrective action. The action recommended by the state long-term care ombudsman and approved by our AAA governing board includes employment of a full-time long-term care ombudsman coordinator. So, how do we get there? We have to increase our staffing. So, the total cost for the AAA to add the ombudsman coordinator position is $169,244. This includes a portion of our AAA coordinators' pay that will need to come from the AAA budget instead of the ombudsman budget, because the AAA coordinator will no longer be doing double duty, filling both of those positions. So, this is an increase of the match amount, $74,589, that we're asking the counties to cover, in addition to their current match amounts.
I have a question before you move on?
Sure.
If I may. Where does the current match, let's just pay attention to Lake right now, the $41,962, that comes from the sources of funds that we receive to run the AAA program?
Nicole, can you answer this one for us? Where does that match come from?
The $41,962 comes from general fund. It comes from budget 5168.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. So, in order to increase the staffing, we have to increase the funding, so that we can afford that extra staff member. So, we, the governing board of the Area Agency on Aging recommended that we take this item to our Board of Supervisors to get the approved funding. Mendocino County has already approved the funding. So, what we're looking for to move forward with this position is the funding from Lake County. If this is approved, then Social Services can move forward with adding this position to the 2324 budget. It's important to keep in mind that, according to CDA, the population of seniors in Lake County is expected to grow 20% between 2010 and 2060, and Mendocino County is expected to see a 44% increase in that population. As this population grows, we will have more people needing the services that we provide, and that's something to keep in mind when we're looking at funding these programs. The Area Agency on Aging governing board has agreed to address the match amounts more frequently. Deana, you'll have to remind me what they decided, I think it was every two years?
It's going to be every four years, in line with the area plan update that happens.
Thank you, every four years with the area plan update, to make sure that our county match amounts correspond to the current population counts, and that they're sufficient to support and sustain these programs that are so desperately needed by the people in our communities. So, now, this is where we get to questions. I'm sure there are questions. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. Feel free.
Okay, before we get to questions, Supervisor Crandall's the Chair of AAA, and I'm just wondering if you want to add something?
No, yes, we've been looking at this for, I want to say, past four or five meetings, right? Maybe even more, yeah.
It's been six months, I think, since the state ombudsman came.
Right, and so we've just been basically trying to iron through it, push through it, figure out what equitable or what the amount would be for the match when it came to Mendocino and Lake. And so, I know that the staff has worked really hard to get us the numbers that were most recent in regards to the population of the seniors, because I think they were using another one, I think from 20-something, 16 or 15, and so thankful that the staff found that, to ensure that our seniors were represented accordingly. So, in our AAA meeting, we voted to basically implement this change as well, and so basically, we just need, of course, Mendocino had already conducted their vote, and now it's just us, so. That's all I have on that.
Yeah, he's referring to an incorrect report where we actually were going to have more seniors, and that got straightened out, thankfully. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you, and to the item itself, it makes perfect sense, but one of the slides raised a question for me about equity. So, according to the terms of the JPA, this share is all population-based, but I was stricken by the amount of staff hours Mendocino has versus ours. So, the bang-for-the-buck question comes up to me, equity comes up to me, especially now that I see Mendocino's population is going to 44% increase versus 20% for us. So, I just, I don't even know how to wrap my head around the question, but I think you know where I'm headed. We can do a simple share based on census data or population data, but the actual program itself, the deliverables vary quite a bit in Mendocino County versus Lake County. So, at some point, the equity question comes up, you know, is population the appropriate metric to do that share of cost? Is it locked in by state law that the JPA has to use that metric, or am I just barking at the moon now? And I'll shut up and listen to the answer.
It's a fair question, and I might not have the best answer. This might need to go to Crystal. But part of the reason why our Lake County facilities don't have as high of hours is, of course, the travel time. If we're able to fill this position, we may be able to have an employee that's located in Lake, an employee that's located in Mendocino, which would cut down on travel time. Also, our ombudsman that services our Lake County facilities is our AAA coordinator, so she's split, and she doesn't have the full capacity to be just an ombudsman in our county. Part of the ombudsman coordinator position duties is to create and maintain and grow a volunteer network. Our volunteer network was decimated and is gone, basically gone after COVID. So, we need somebody who can really spend the time to grow our volunteer network, because they can do a lot of this work that allows us to serve both counties more equitably. The JPA, I don't know that that can be revisited without making some big changes to the Area Agency on Aging as a whole. That's a question for the, probably the governing board, and I don't know if Crystal has anything she wants to add in there.
No, you're doing a great job, Lisa. You know, I would just say that traditionally, the AAA is underfunded. They have mandates that are not funded, and the long-term care ombudsman is one of those. I mean, it is funded, but not adequately. And so, after the review that we had, we were strongly encouraged, and strongly encouraged to create more capacity in that area. And in fact, there was a point when we thought we would be on a corrective action for that, but they realized there was, it was not actually able to apply a corrective action to us. But, you know, we do see this problem in real time, in that Deana Eddings Green is doing currently double duty, and her time is really spread thin in those areas. And so, I think it would be advantageous overall to get this done, but again, the Area Agency on Aging is not funded to pay for the mandates that they have. So, that is why we are here before the board, and it is not also, I'm sure you're all aware, ADSS program.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So, a couple of questions, and thank you for Ms. Faraco's time yesterday and speaking with me on this. I'll start with the easier question. As far as, obviously, if we're using 40-something thousand from general fund here, we're asking for another 30-something thousand dollars in order to meet the matching needs of 23, and 2223. We know where that money's coming from. We, it's just something we have to adjust for in the budget, just kind of curious if there's a good response to that.
I don't have one. Crystal, did your staff speak to Stephen before he left on vacation? I do not know the answer to that. Lisa, did you have a conversation with Stephen?
So, this, when we submitted this item originally, the admin office asked for a detailed budget to show where the budget was going, what we were asking for, our staffing, all of that information. That was submitted to Stephen Carter and I don't, yes, Ayesha. So, they looked over our numbers and made sure that we were, I guess, good. The budget is not really my, my deal, thankfully, but we did get the admin, this did go through admin before it came to your board.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where it's going to come from. I wasn't part of that discussion, but I can bring that back to the board. It wouldn't have gotten this far if it had not been reviewed by Stephen Carter.
Okay. And then, we're looking at 2223. Are we preparing?
This is 2324. I'm sorry, fiscal year 2324 is when this would come into effect.
Okay, so we are looking at the fact that in our MOU with our unions, that there's another 2% increase coming on as of, I'm guessing, July 1st?
So, when we created this match amount, we put the ombudsman position in at step five, so that we wouldn't get somebody in that we couldn't afford to pay. Nicole, did you include the cost of the increases from the unions?
Yeah, I used year three for the MOU.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to ask that, since that wasn't on the detailed stuff, or at least I would have, I missed it if that was. And then, my last question is one that I left Ms. Faraco with, and that's budget-wise, and I think this requires a much deeper conversation, but I just want to share my concern. Budget-wise, we're looking at, for 2324, 1.9 million with approximately 500 and, I'm going to say 50,000, something like that, for administrative purposes. That is close to 25%, and I feel that's top-heavy. And I recognize the need for staffing to ensure that the programs are running smoothly or being reviewed, and that everything is being made available to our seniors here, both in Mendo and Lake. And so, what I'm hopeful is, I mean, I'm looking at our Vision 2028, and item number 10 is to invest in Lake County's richest resource, our people, and at the bottom of that third bullet point, it says, "Recognize the wisdom and experience of senior citizens and serve them well." And I feel that, as a board, we deal with fires when it comes to our seniors, where like, our senior center's saying, "We're running out of money, can you help us?" "We have a pandemic, can you help us?" And I'm not seeing a continuous, and as you stated, it's very underfunded, your AAA, for the needs of the area. And I'd like to have a deeper conversation of how do we try to invest in some of this? And maybe it's an incremental investment to get to where we need to get, where we are investing in our richest resource, our people, which includes our seniors, where it's not an emergency situation that they come and request to see if we have funds available, that it's something that we can actually fulfill their needs without having to come to us in such urgent needs as they usually do. I don't believe that I've gone a year, both as a council member and now as a Board of Supervisor, where our senior centers were not struggling to keep doing all the work that is requested of them. And so, I don't have an answer, but I'm hopeful that in the future, I'm not part of the AAA, and I appreciate the board members that are, but I'd like to get some better understanding and maybe a deeper presentation of AAA at the Board of Supervisors, because I'd love to see what we can do, and obviously, we'd have to ask Mendo to do the same thing.
Let's keep it on this item, though, because this is just for this request that
And the reason I'm asking that is because it is absolutely top-heavy
Yeah.
by 25%, and that concerns me. I would rather talk about providing more services than adding more to the administrative part. So, it's very related to that, that I can't keep supporting the way that this is built, because it feels very off in comparison to what our seniors
Supervisor, sorry to interrupt, but our, we're counting under administrative, the cost of salaries and benefits for staff that are working in the ombudsman program. Typically, the, this salary for the ombudsman program coordinator, the ombudsman would be under program, but because it's run through the Department of Social Services, our staff are using those funds to run the program. If we, Nicole can speak more in depth to the budget and the percentages that are in use, but if it was run as an outside program, it would be far, far leaner in administration if our staff wasn't having to run the program.
And, so I'll just add that we were visited by the state ombudsman, I think it was October? Was it October? Do you guys remember? I think, yeah, October, and basically told we have to do this. We don't really have a choice. So, we just, we spent the last six months trying to figure it out. And looking at the, looking at the, the match amount every so year, every few years, so that we can stay within the correct correlations between our two counties is important, but essentially, we're not giving a choice on this. It wasn't exactly mandated, but they did say they would be following up with the requirement, and we would be out of compliance.
If I may make a comment to that?
Yeah.
I'm not trying to say we shouldn't move forward with today. I think that having the CDA provide that report to us and moving forward is fine. Just requesting sometime in the future, it's up to the AAA board and staff, but sometime in the future to have that deeper conversation.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the board, then I will look for public comment. Have anybody in the Zoom room?
Crystal had her hand up.
Oh, Crystal?
Yes, hi, thank you. Crystal Markatan, Director of Social Services, Executive Director of AAA. So, you know, we do have some administrative expenses, but for the most part, Deana's position, when she was, has been doing this, the most part, Dina um position when she was has been doing this has been literally going to um throughout Lake County uh to resolve uh on long-term care ombudsman complaints. And this um takes her away from the administrative duties of running the AAA, um which was the problem that was, you know, was expressed to us by um the state when they came in to do a review. Uh you know, all in in total, I think we have three people working uh for the AAA um between two counties and it is a huge geographic area um to cover. And it's a complex set of small programs that um are slightly different in each of the two counties, but it's amazing to me the work that is being done in this program area by so few people. And as um it was pointed out earlier, our senior population is growing. It's not shrinking. And so um we can expect um, you know, a more intensive use of the services over the coming years. And so I would like um the board to support this. It sounds like um that may be the direction you're going. Um in in that we I think we need to have AAA in this county moving forward and um we need to not uh we need to be able to provide the services somewhat with fidelity with the state's plan. Um and we clearly are not hitting all the marks there and most of that is due to understaffing and again, just a complex geographic area that we're covering. And I I just can't say, I I have to say thank you to the staff that work in the AAA because it is um it's a huge task.
Thank you, Crystal. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I I just want to echo Supervisor Sabatier's comments. I'm going to be in support of this. Um but I think there are some big picture things AAA probably needs to come back and look at, if only for the board's education. And um that, you know, I would like a little clarity where we're getting this general fund match. Um if only because as we're coming up to budget, I can think any at least one agency, one department I know that desperately needs some general fund support. There's probably more. Um and going back to the equity thing. So I don't want to reinvent the AAA wheel. You you've said staffing is an issue, so if there's a skew in in service delivery and uh uh you know, we're we're kind of stuck in population-based uh percentages versus needs-based, um maybe we can work through that as we get a better idea of how to properly fund this. But I hear what you're saying, chronically underfunded, state mandate, got to do it anyway, corrective action if we don't. Um but here we're putting a Band-Aid on it with general fund money. I can think again of multiple departments that probably need some additional love. And and so I wish I understood this better. So I'm going to support it without having a full understanding of how it applies to AAA here and how similar concerns raised about other departments that are going to have funding shortfalls uh for their unfunded state mandates, um how and when they can come back to the well and ask for some general fund support. So uh confusing, excited to move this forward, but also not excited.
May I have one final comment?
Sure.
So just to clarify, um the area agency on aging is not a Department of Social Services program. So we are not funded for it. It comes with its own uh funding and typically in other counties, it is run outside of uh Health and Human Services. Um and in this case, I'm guessing some years back, there was no other place to put it. And so it ended up at Social Services without funding or, you know, the minimal amount of funding that it came with between uh the two um the funding from both counties. So we um at Social Services cover all of the overhead, which includes the building space, the cars, um you know, all of the um all of what it takes to actually operate. Um all we're really asking from the board is help with um this uh funding for staff.
Okay. No one in Zoom?
There is another hand in Zoom, phone six-two-zero-five.
Okay.
Thank you. This is Bart Levinson. Um thank you for the presentation. I have a question about uh one of your projections uh about uh the growth from twenty-ten to twenty-sixty. Uh if I saw the slide correctly, you said Mendocino was projected to be a growth of forty-four percent, but Lake County only a growth of twenty percent. And I wonder if you could speak to that. And then I also want to make a statement that uh it needs to be for this fire-prone county, uh a long-term goal. And I appreciate uh Supervisor Sabatier's comments very, very much, uh that we make sure that the senior centers are outfitted and prepared as disaster ready.
But this item, Bart, is about the ombudsman um increase. So that's what we're speaking about today. So can you keep your comments to that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, we're talking about the general fund and that's what I'm speaking to.
No, we're talking about increasing the amount by thirty-two thousand dollars to pay for this position for the ombudsman. So that's what this item is about. Are you still there?
Oh, I'm just listening to what you said.
Yes. Okay, so that's what we're speaking about. So if you if you can keep your comments within that, within these parameters, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
So my question about the percentages uh is not relevant to the discussion at this time.
Yes, we'll get we'll ask Crystal, but if do you have anything else to add? Okay, if there's nothing more than, Crystal, can you speak or Lisa on how those projections came out?
I think Lisa would be best to handle that one.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, I could speak to that. So that um that data came from CDA directly, which is California Department of Aging. It's available on their website. If you go to data and reports and then facts about California's elderly, it um gives a breakdown of the anticipated um increase in elderly population for persons age sixty and older um across that year range and a breakdown by county. And that is available on the CDA website.
Great, thank you.
We have another hand from Paul Branson.
Okay. Paul, if you'd like to unmute and give your name and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Um I'm Paul Branson. I'm the President of the Advisory Council on Aging for Lake of Mendocino County and I'm a Lake County resident. And I'm speaking in favor of this of this item. Um you know, the big picture here is we have one position now that is managing two major programs. And if we get if we can uh if you can approve this funding, then it should have a major impact on both the ombudsman program, which needs a better oversight of our our long-term care residents. And hopefully, uh it will it definitely will add more capacity to the AAA and those um seniors who are not in long-term care residents but who need additional services. And and we just finished our area plan update. We've got, you know, uh uh pretty uh strong goals in terms of improving housing, improving healthcare, mental health, transportation, resolving isolation. And you know, we just need more capacity in our staff to help uh find the resources to do that and to coordinate with other organizations. So um I'm I'm in support and I believe the rest of our advisory council members are in support of this as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
That's it.
Okay, if that's it, then I'll bring it back to the board for action. Oh, CAO Parker?
Yes. Um I don't see that there is uh the action is to recommend that this be considered during the budget process. There is no.
Oh, okay, right.
Is it call session?
No.
You can come in.
Okay.
That we bring this back through the budget process.
Okay, right. So there is no action required. Okay.
You sure?
There's nothing. It says, um, we normally don't author do this type of funding outside of the budget process. So the recommendation from the board is to bring this back before the board for consideration for funding.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need a consensus.
I think we have consensus?
Hmm.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation today.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. We will now do calendar seven point one. Who's ready to start?
I'll do it.
Okay.
So the next uh two days, I will be in Sacramento with Chair Paeska regarding the CSAC LEC conference, uh which will be in coordination with the League of Cities. Uh major topic of discussion will be homelessness. Uh there will also be some um sessions regarding uh individual sectors of our communities. I know I'll be joining uh or I plan to join a a group that I've been a part of for agriculture, environment and resources um and just catch up with those folks and we'll see what else we go uh and attend. And then on Friday, it looks like I got myself involved in a Potter Valley meeting uh that I'm sure that Supervisor Crandall will speak to more. And if I am back in time, I'll be meeting again with our tax collector with the uh CSAC program, Easy Smart Pay, uh to get some of the uh final questions that we still had about that program to see if that's something we want to bring back to the Board of Supervisors for consideration. Um I believe on the sixteenth, I have also been um asked and I said yes to helping out with the ravioli feed. Um I thought I got away from it, but I didn't. And then on Monday, uh meeting with our CAO and coming back here on Tuesday.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So just real quick, uh we had the last week, we had the Cal. Well, no, actually that was uh yesterday. Last week, from last week's report, I'll just say that because that's a technicality. Uh we had the Middle Creek Restoration Committee yesterday. Um still trudging along, trying to get some things done, get, you know, get the dialogue happening so that we can uh move forward getting some of these properties um purchased and getting further into the uh discussion. Um there was a Clover Creek Caltrans meeting. They're moving forward to assist um they're going to they got funded with, I think it's with the tribe of Habemtal and they're going to move forward in clearing some of the area there. So we're just getting getting included into that. Um so it's a bit it's a big issue in my district, both of those, and it has to do a lot with flooding as well. So I know that was mentioned earlier. Just want to let people know I'm actively involved in that. Uh Wednesday, tomorrow, NACO leadership onboarding. I think it's the same thing that you did, Supervisor Paeska. Then there is a Middle Creek Restoration Roundtable meeting in Sacramento. The California Natural Resources Agency is hosting it. And uh it's a hitch discussion. Um when I talked with uh Martha Guzman of EPA, consistently, you know, let them know that the Middle Creek Restoration Project would be an ideal habitat for the hitch. And so um looks like we're going to have people from California Natural Resources, Department of Water Resources, Army Corps of Engineers, the tribes, which would be Robinson, Big Valley and Habemtal. Uh I'm not sure if Middletown. I think Middletown might be as well. Um you the EPA, of course, uh numerous staff, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Central Valley Water Board, County of Lake, um of course us, and then the State Water Resources Control Board. So that'll be tomorrow in Sacramento. I'll be heading towards that. Maybe I'll follow you. I don't know. Uh Thursday, uh EPA Ad Hoc Committee that I have, um let's see, Lake County Clean Water Program Management Council meeting. And then Friday is the Potter Valley Project Tour with Congressman Thompson. Going to go take a look at, I want to say, Van Arsdale Dam, uh Scott Dam, and then uh talk more about what that whole letter looks like with opening the uh well, Congressman Thompson conducted a letter uh after the result of a seismic study and um PG&E announcing that they're going to keep the gates open so that the water uh can flow through. So that's uh one of the reasons why we're going to conduct this uh visit uh next week, on next week, Monday, CAO meeting and then uh BOS Tuesday.
Okay, who's ready down here?
Um uh Lakeport Fire District tonight, uh both a regular meeting and a special meeting. That's agenda control is hard. Um so they're doing both. Um and uh I'll be there this afternoon. Uh haven't confirmed it. I may be taking a run up to Arcata on Thursday to dig up some historical documents involving what was previously proposed as the Scotch Valley Dam about fifty years ago. Um I'm trying to find a postmortem information on that. Uh this coming Saturday at Highland Springs, uh Mr. De Leon's here, so shout out to Water Resources Public Works. Been a long time coming, um but uh Highland Springs is reopened. There's still lots of downed lumber. Uh it is still kind of slippery and hazardous out there. So this Saturday uh from nine AM to two PM, there'll be a community workday out there. Uh bring hand tools, gloves, sunscreen, water, lunch. Don't bring power tools. Uh we're going to let the pros do that and they have done quite a bit out there. So I'm very appreciative to uh Water Resources staff and any crews that got out there to to start this work. And I do expect our uh community will turn out in droves on Saturday to help continue that work. Um Highland Springs relies in great part on its volunteer base, both the disc golfers and the equestrian users and other user groups out there. So it's nice to see that come up. And apparently, ravioli is on my future Sunday. So if you throw food at me, I will come. So I will be there. And that's it.
Uh after today's board meeting, um have the Lower Lake Action Committee Group. They changed their meetings to Tuesday nights. So going to try and make that dinner tonight. Tomorrow, Jessica, I see you asked me to do a gender review. If we could do a gender review at eight AM, because I would that be possible? Only reason is I got to be in Napa at the Junior College uh at ten. So if we could get that done, then I could head out to Napa. I greatly appreciate that. But I can I can do that tomorrow if we move it to eight AM. Would that be possible?
Johanna, are you available?
We can do it early or if you want.
Eight AM is good. That still gives me time to get down there to Napa, so I'm fine with eight AM.
Let's keep it at eight then.
Okay. All right. And so then uh tomorrow, uh from ten to two, have, I think, a short workforce lines in North Bay meeting. And then we have our Development Board Study Session. Um and then Thursday, uh looks like two o'clock, we have an RA Support Meeting. Do you have that on your calendar for Red Cross? Something sent to me.
Uh.
Maybe it was, I'm not sure who sent it.
I do not.
Shannon Kimball, maybe uh Terry set it up. Yeah, Terry. So anyway, I I applied to that, so I'm going to try and get on that at two. And then Thursday night, have the math meeting. Math meeting, I am on the agenda. They want to talk about a million different things, but uh you know, roads, everything else, housing. Uh I I can't remember the list that was put together, but we'll do my best to bring them the information that I have. And then on uh Friday, have the meeting with uh CAO. On the fifteenth, there's the mountain bike race, is that right? Out at Six Sigma. I haven't seen that, so I may try and do that. So right now, it sounds like everybody's going to the ravioli feed. Um Bruno, you're serving. Are you serving, Jessica?
I think we're all going to be roped.
Yeah, I think I was asked. I haven't returned the call yet.
Yes.
There's already two volunteers, so I think you guys got it. I think that'll work.
He wants all of us serving.
Yeah, so um I will call Brad this afternoon and most likely we'll see everybody on uh Sunday. And then Monday, we have the Risk Reduction Authority meeting and potentially maybe scheduling something with Sam uh to record something for Earth Day um on that that Monday in the morning, I think. Uh so we'll try and get that figured out. And then back here on Tuesday.
Yes.
Tax Day. Well, it used to be Tax Day.
Used to be Tax Day. Yes, so tonight, after this meeting, driving to Sacramento um through Thursday night and Friday morning, I have a Zona Benefit meeting and then I have my very last NACO class. Um then I've we have a staff tree meeting, Scott?
She's done with NACO.
We have a staff tree meeting um at one o'clock. I'm not going to be able to make it, though. I've got another appointment. And then Friday, I will be at Six Sigma from I think the first race usually starts around hmm, I think it's eight or nine AM. And then all the high schoolers will be in the morning, middle schoolers will be in the afternoon. And then the high schoolers will be in the morning, middle schoolers will be in the afternoon. It's going to be so fun. And then Sunday, yep, I'm going to be doing raviolis. Monday, Risk Reduction Authority and my meeting with CAO Parker. So I am available to do the videoing, Sam, anytime I go around, between 11:30 and about 1:00. So if we can maybe do it together? Monday. And then we have to be back here in Lakeport at 3:00 for the Risk Reduction Authority. Okay, that's it. Well, thank you for joining us.
Chair Piska?
Yes.
I forgot two things, very quickly. This Saturday, okay, I won't be, I'll be at Highland Springs, but the Children's Walk and Festival will be this Saturday in Lakeport at Library Park from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., it looks like. And if you want more information on that, you can go to lakecoe.org/childabuseprevention. Also, just wanted to share, saw my first HITCH yesterday in Forbes Creek, right down here by the Chevron. The creek bed's not in great shape, it's all silty and stuff like that. But they are running, and they're not going to get much farther than Main Street, but we're going to keep an eye out for strandings and stuff like that. So it was, it was a great day for me to see just people kind of randomly staring at the creek by Chevron. And sure enough, there were a small group of chai in there, and a great celebration. And I informed the city and some other people about that. So I will help keep an eye on them, and if there's any strandings, I'll be up to my knees in mud to get them out of there. But I just wanted to share that, it was a great day for me.
Okay, and this is the end of open session. We will be moving into closed session. We have two items, 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Works Director, and 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Special District Administrator. And that is it for open session, and we'll go into closed.